Welcome, everybody, to the February 13th meeting of the Baltimore City School Board. Can I have a motion to open the public business meeting? Moved by Commissioner Cannon. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor? Okay, the meeting is officially open. We'd like to recognize and request the presentation of colors by the JROTC of Frederick Douglass High School. Please stand.
Colors, hold. Left face. Sir, Cadet Sandra Abraham from Frederick Douglass High School. I'm your junior ROTC. Your question is to present the colors?
Permission granted.
Thank you, ma'am. Colors, reverse, march. Present, arms.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors, post.
Ready, cut. I'd now like to turn to Commissioner Jeanette Richardson. Maybe, there you go.
Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. I want to take this time to acknowledge two individuals who have passed in our school district. Andre Galloway was a 10th grader at Frederick Douglass High School. Andre had a smile that could light up an entire hallway. He was a student that was quiet and maintained positive relationship with staff and students at Frederick Douglass High School. Andre will be missed by our entire Frederick Douglass High School family. Loretta Walden was a principal for city schools. Loretta began her 30-plus-year career at city schools as an elementary teacher, and throughout the course of her career, served in several capacities as a teacher, principal, principal mentor, from 1983 to 1996, and assistant principal at School 4, 104, 157 Lafayette Elementary and Margaret Brent Elementary. She will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and city schools community. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the prior sessions' open meeting, prior open session minutes and the closed session summaries? Moved by Commissioner Bondima. Second by Commissioner Cannon. All in favor? Seven, zero, approve. We don't have committee reports tonight because there have been no committee meetings in between the last public meeting and tonight's public meeting. In Commissioner Hassan's absence, though, I do want to say that the Operations Committee meets late afternoon and early evening on February 20th, and then that evening of February 20th is the rescheduled policy forum on police policy. That was rescheduled, it was a snow day, so I know that this has been posted and people, there was a lot of outreach to the partners who have worked on that with us, so I'm hoping people can participate on the 20th. I only have one thing I want to say by way of board chair comments. Further down the agenda, we're going to vote on a revised recommendation for one of the charter school renewals. It was posted, and you'll see it, and we'll discuss it tonight. And the only thing I want to note is that everything that the board gets, every call that we get, every letter that we get, every testimony that we hear, everything that the staff writes, it actually all matters. So, we really appreciate people coming out tonight, but we appreciate everything people do to exercise their voice, and we listen. Doesn't always work out the way everybody wants it, but I really do want to thank everybody, not just on this case, but on so many other issues, that it's important that people take the time to make their voices heard, and we do appreciate it. So, thank you very much. With that, I want to acknowledge two gifts. $491.58 for the buildup physics lab at Blue Ford due Jemison STEM Academy West from Baltimore Gas and Electric, and $5,500 for the principals initiative at William Pack Elementary School from the Harris Creek Community Church. So, thank you very much to BGE and the Harris Creek Community Church. We're now going to vote on the consent agenda items that are personnel and judicial-related. Want to do it a little differently tonight because there's one hearing, an appeal, that requires two votes, so I'm going to actually take item by item rather than do them as a group. Motion to approve the PEP agenda. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Frank. All in favor? Seven, zero, PEP agenda passes. Appeals and hearings, case 17-16GSAF. Motion to accept the hearing examiner recommendation. Motion? Motion by Commissioner Bondima. Second. By Commissioner Berkeley. All in favor? Motion passes, seven, zero. I'm going to skip over 1709. Appeals and hearings, case 17-45MB. Motion to accept the... Motion to accept the hearing examiner's recommendation. Motion? Commissioner Cameron moves. Second. Commissioner Berkeley. Second. All in favor? Seven, nothing. It passes. Case number 17-59AMD. This is a... May I have a motion to accept the hearing officer's recommendation, which is to reverse the CEO's recommendation? Motion? Motion by Commissioner Frank. Second. Commissioner Cannon. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Motion passes. Case... In case number 1709A, there is a request for oral argument before the board. Is there a motion to grant this request? Having no motion, the motion for a request for a hearing before the board is denied. Is there a motion to hear, to accept the hearing officer's recommendation to deny the appeal? I need a motion now. Motion by Commissioner Berkeley. Second. Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor? Motion passes, seven, nothing. Thank you. Dewana, you got all that? Great. With that, I'd like to turn the agenda over to Dr. Santelisis.
February is officially Career and Technology Month, so I am truly pleased to recognize our highly successful CTE programs here in city schools. Approximately 9,000 city school students, and that's more than 40% of our high school students, participate in some form of, or one of our 44 CTE programs in study, where they can not only earn their high school diplomas, but can also earn industry certifications. Now, along the way, students gain hands-on expertise in career, field, and workplace experience with internships, job shadowing, and other work-based learning opportunities. The video that we are going to show right now highlights one of those pathways, the nursing pathway at Patterson High School, where students are working to become certified nursing assistants, and this is a certification that will allow many of them to work in their field while they are earning money for nursing programs in college. And so, without further ado, we'd like to roll the video, please.
Hey, everyone, Jacqueline here to discuss the Career and Technology Education Pathway for nursing that gets our students certified to work and ready for college all at the same time. Let's check in as they are preparing for an exam.
With this program, and like I stress to them, is that this program enables them to be able to, right out of high school, to get a job.
Lisa remained with the patient, and she called for help. Why is it important to call for help?
The first activity dealt with a scenario a nurse would have to face in a hospital and to identify what they did wrong.
Because, you know, like, you're supposed to have, like, the bed rail, the side rails up, and the bed is always supposed to be lowered, because it tells you what not to do, what to do. So, when you get to the real work world, you already know.
A big part of nursing is being able to ensure safety for patients, coworkers, and knowing how to respond when confronted with an emergency.
Because it can be patients that's paralyzed, they can't get out of the fire, and patients that may be deaf, so they can't hear the fire alarm.
Get any type of disease or being sick at all is scary. It may be become more aware.
Visiting hospitals to job shadow, becoming certified nurse assistants, and changing people's lives are the heart of this pathway.
We go to baby, like, every year, so each year we see different parts of the hospital, places you could work, different types of things you could do in the nursing field, and it's a lot of different fields that you can go into.
They'll have to sit for a certification exam, and then, once they pass that exam...
You are a CNA, a certified nursing assistant, so that is, like, A-plus right there. This is my, this is what I want to do in life.
I want to go to college and work as a CNA, so I can help pay for college. I want to find a way to help change people's life and be a help to people.
Getting your life in the right direction is a challenge, but the students in the nursing pathway are taking steps each day to become certified and make an impact. This has been Jacqueline Hammett, reporting for the city school student media team. See you soon.
So, nursing, very good. And the great part is that nursing is really just one of our CTE pathways. Here in the district office, for those of you who come during the week, we actually see the good work and enjoy the great food of our culinary and hospitality students from Edmondson High School, Carver, NAF, Murvo, and Forest Park every day in our student-run cafe, and so we get to benefit directly from the work of our young people in that particular career pathway. And I would also like to invite everyone to visit the CTE showcase here at the district office on February 28th with students from graphic design, healthcare, culinary arts, and other pathways that give demonstrations that highlight their skills. I am pleased to say that last year, when I was first, when my blood pressure was first taken by some of our health career students, and it was thought to be a little too high, I calmed myself down, came back at the end of the period, and my blood pressure was normal. So, for those of you who want to make sure that you're on track, I would say that you will gain as much as anything that the students give by visiting us on February 28th. So, we welcome, it's all day. So, it's from about 10:00 in the morning until about 2:30 or 3:00 in the afternoon. The other piece that most folks who know me know is that, like a lot of us, I am an incredible sports fan. But as educators and parents, we also know that it's important to look just beyond the winning of games and really to what sports can do to develop character, responsibility in our young people, to really encourage leadership and sportsmanship. The Inside Out Initiative, which is supported by our partners at Under Armour and the Baltimore Ravens, really works with our student athletes, our coaches, and communities to make sports a catalyst for our students to achieve their full potential. And one of the things that's really important to know about this initiative is that, for years, our coaches in the district were probably some of the city schools employees who had the least amount of professional development in these other areas, and so because of our partnership with the Ravens, with Under Armour, and with Inside Out itself, we are now the beneficiaries of having coaches who are able to be supported in the ways that professional athletes are in developing these other character-building skills. So, I'm very pleased right now to welcome Jody Redman and Joe Erman forward. They're the co-founders of the Inside Out Initiative, and they're going to talk with us about the great work that they're doing for our students and our coaches and our communities. And one of the things I remember from my first meeting with Mr. Erman was that, for someone who is as storied an athlete as he is, the one thing he wanted to talk about most was not about young people winning, but developing young people into amazing citizens of high-quality character and the power of sports to do that. So, without further ado, I welcome you both to share more about the Inside Out Initiative. Thank you.
Okay, great. Honored to be with you. Let me just tell you about the beginnings of the Inside Out Initiative. In 2014, an NFL player got arrested for assault on his soon-to-be bride. There was a two-game suspension given to him. Later, a video came out, and I think it was the first time much of America saw what male violence toward women looks like. And there was a blowback in the NFL. And Roger Goodell, the commissioner, put together about an eight-person advisory board. I was one of them to try to figure out what is an appropriate penalty, how to get on the preventative or the curative side of this. In the midst of that meeting, Roger turned to me and asked me if I would speak to coaching character. In the context, can you coach character in a way that would alleviate many of the social problems we have? And my response to the commissioner was, no, I don't think so. One, you can't build moral character on faulty masculinity. There are two types of character. There's performance character, and there's moral character. Performance character has to do with relationship to self. Moral character has to do with relationship to others. Trust, respect, empathy, kindness, moral courage. And the second thing I told the commissioner was, there's no space in high school sports today. Somehow, we moved into this win-at-all-cost mentality, where everything was dictated to by the scoreboard. So, I had called up Jody Redman, who runs the initiative in Minnesota. I asked her if she would partner with us, and she did, and we started off, we are presently in about 13 different states. This is our purpose, to transform the win-at-all-cost sports culture, where the value is too often defined by the scoreboard, to a culture that defines and promotes sports as a human growth experience. The question is, why do we even have sports in schools today if they're not about academic achievement, if they're not about socio-emotional well-being, if they're not about the human growth and development of young people? So, we're in 13 different states, working through entire states, and in 2015, I went to Steve Bichotti, the owner of the Orioles, and Dick Cass, and asked them if they'd be willing to fund a partnership with the Baltimore City School System to just do it here in Baltimore City.
The Ravens.
What did I say?
You said Orioles.
Oh, the Orioles. Delete that, please, by all means, wow.
You can just do a backup.
And as a lifelong Yankee fan, wow, how'd that come out? The Baltimore Ravens. So, we launched that initiative. Under Armour came alongside of us, and we've had this tremendous partnership, starting with the principals, working with athletic directors. So, this is the Inside Out system. You want to speak to that?
So, we have two different tracks. We talk about the Inside Out philosophy, and we talk about the Inside Out system. The Inside Out system is really a systemic change model that looks at awareness, alignment, action, and accountability. Awareness of what is the purpose and value of sports for our students as it relates to their educational value. Alignment, aligning school communities, not just coaches and athletic administrators, but school boards and superintendents and principals and ADs and parents and community members to come around that common, shared value. And it's really centers on a common language. The goal is always to win the game. That's the curriculum. It's not the purpose, though. The purpose is human growth and development of kids and connecting them to caring adults in their learning community. Action centers on the philosophy of, why do I coach? Why do I coach the way I do? How does it feel to be coached by me? And how do we define success? And then, most importantly, accountability. How are we holding our school communities, not just our coaches, accountable to the transformative power of what sport can be if they're done right in our kids' lives?
So, that's a picture of the alignment. That's what we try to work through from school boards all the way down to parents and communities. Everybody has to be in agreement. What is the purpose of sports? Where's the action accountability aligned from? And then, these are the four fundamental questions. We've been working with Ms. Tiffany Byrd, who's just wonderful, working with athletic directors and trying to empower them to work with coaches. Each coach gets part of the philosophy. I think we have one more slide. And then, we've also, through that partnership, created a academic Baltimore Student-Athlete Coalition to help prepare students to increase their grade point average, ensure eligibility, and to just make it a more productive experience. So, we're very honored to be here, very proud to be a Baltimorean, and to make a contribution here to this city and to our schools.
Did you want to ask a question? I have a question. I want to see if there... Does anybody have any questions? So, I do. I was, I just actually, I'm old enough to remember when Joe Erman was a great Baltimore Colt, so I know the young people might not know that, but I think it's really cool that you're helping out in this way, so thank you.
Thank you.
Even though I'm a Steelers fan, was then and now. Anyway. So, I was fortunate to be at the kickoff a number of months ago out at the, in the Ravens Training and Performance Center, and really thought the timeliness with the release of the blueprint and the connection between this and the whole child. And it occurred to me then, and then, having a chance to speak with you earlier, when we think about who are the kind of supportive, caring adults in kids' lives, for kids that play sports, it's frequently, the coach is one of the most important people. Are you familiar in either Baltimore and other places where you work with the coaches being included in faculty meetings and in other settings around the school where there would be conversations among adults about, you know, what the young child, what the young person needs, since the coach might have a lot more information than a lot of the other adults? And it never occurred to me whether or not these people are now included, or should they be, in regular faculty gatherings.
Yeah, as I said, we're in 13 states, and when it works best is when coaches are included in that whole academic participation. Coaches have this incredible power, platform, and privilege to speak into the lives of young people. But coaches either transact with young people for their own needs, or their commitment is to transform the lives of those coaches. When coaches are embedded in a system, get to speak in, get information, it teaches you how to better coach them, how to lead them in life, and to be a better mentor as well. So, the alignment, the inclusion, I think, is very important. Sports are not extracurricular, they're co-curricular, and it's really the last classroom of the day, and there are things you're going to learn on that playing field or court or pool that you won't learn in a math class, but it's really about emotional intelligence.
It just strikes me as, you know, as, I know you have a process, and you work with the athletic directors and the principals, and, but it, while it may not be easy, we ask a lot of principals now, it may be one of those low-hanging fruits, but just the inclusion of coaches in some of the regular school faculty activities might, if they're not now, might be an important thing to do, to make sure that their voices are included in conversations about kids.
And certainly athletic directors, who then touch and guide and lead all of the coaches, so. And I will say this, in Baltimore City, we've been working in the monthly meetings now for a number of months, where we have some dedicated, committed people just doing an incredible job that deserve a much more thank you and promise. They're really, I've been tremendously impressed, as has Jody.
Great. Any other thoughts? Ashley, hi, Ashley.
So, as a student in Baltimore City, especially at my school, Digital Harbor, you really get to see how coaches really do interact with the students, and they really do make a great impact, especially in our track team. Our coach, he not only likes to involve himself in the sports, but educationally, he also likes to involve himself. So, he is always on top of the students, and you see them in the hallways, and like, though, did you go to coach class? Did you say after school for these courses? Well, you can't do this if you don't, like, get your grades up. And even as a freshman going on to a senior, I would constantly see that same coach on students, and, I mean, not just only on the track, not only on track, and not only on the field, you know, you actually see it in the hallways, and then you start to hear students getting full rides to these colleges, and you ask yourself, well, it's such a great experience, and it's such a great privilege to actually see that happening, and how a coach can have a great impact on a student, and seeing how these students strive for success, and seeing how they get these full-ride scholarships, and you see the happiness on their faces and the happiness around the other students, and it makes other students want to do more. So, I mean, I think it's a great program, so.
Well, thank you very much. Good coaches are mentors, and all of us are in this room because we've had a mentor. The reality is, only 97%, only 3% of all student athletes are ever going to step foot on an athletic arena in college. 97% is going to end in high school, and the question is, is what have we delivered, given them in that time period? So, thank you very much for your words.
And with that, I will not only thank Ashley for very crisply and poignantly getting to the bottom line, but I really do want to thank you all again for just, really, in a very tangible way, modeling what student wholeness is, and really bringing, as you noted, to our coaches, our athletic directors, the kind of support that they've always deserved. I want you to know that was the one event at Raven Stadium that I missed, and everybody came back talking about it, and you made our folks feel like the superstars that they are for kids, so thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. And I do want to thank the Baltimore Ravens for their participation, as well as Under Armour.
Absolutely, absolutely. And as a Patriots fan, you know, it says, it says a lot if I'm thanking the Baltimore Ravens as well. You know, I had to get it in. If you got in Steelers, thank you again. It is now my privilege to recognize, really, another courageous act of bravery by two of our very own school police officers. In the challenging times that we are living in within our city with regards to our safety challenges and other things, I have to say that this is yet another example of the commitment of school police to making sure that our young people, our schools, are safe. And so, on January 18th, school police were advised that a student at Carver Vocational Technical High School was in possession of a handgun. School police officers Demetrius Charles and LaShawn Webb approached the student and recovered a loaded handgun without incident. I am very pleased to announce that, in recognition of their selfless bravery, Officer Charles and Officer Webb have been awarded the Medal of Honor, the highest award that can be given to a school police officer. The Medal of Honor is awarded to officers who distinguish themselves by conspicuous gallantry and courage at the risk of their own lives. I would also like to point out, as these officers both come forward to receive a plaque, that part of what made this, this act possible was the relationship that these officers build with young people, and the fact that they had the relationship with young people on the ground to recover this loaded weapon without incident, and in a way that verified the humanity of the young people within that school. So, I want to thank them not only for doing their job, but the way that they do their job, which gives them the credibility... job, which gives them the credibility on the ground with the people who count most, and that is the students of our schools. So, Officer Charles and Officer Webb, please come forward to receive this honor.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board and chief school police. I don't really have too much to say, I just want to thank my partners. Just, we're all a family and a team. I think, once we learn that we are in this together, I think we're going to make it a better place for the students, staff, and everybody in the whole community.
I just want to second Officer Webb's comments. I was just fortunate to be in the right place at the right time to disarm the student, to make sure our learning environments are safe, so students can come in and get their lesson. Thank you.
Thank you. At our next board meeting, we will be honoring another group of school police officers for their apprehension of armed robbery suspects and recovery of a handgun and a stolen vehicle. I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge those officers tonight, Corporal Nathan Warren, Officer Tracy Moore, Officer Lawrence Smith, and Officer Darrell Tompkins. We thank these officers as well for their bravery and service, and we look forward to honoring them and presenting their awards at the meeting on February 27th. City Schools is required to have certain financial audits, including the single audit, which is an audit of the funding that we receive through federal programs. Engagement Director Ayers Coleman will now present the results of the fiscal year 17 single audit by Clifton Larson Allen, our external auditors. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the results of the 2017 single audit. As you know, the single audit is the second half of the CAFRA audit, which we presented, I believe, in November to the board. So, for the presentation, it's going to be brief, I'm not going to bore you with auditor language, but I wanted to go over a couple of things. One is just the overview of the audit approach, the reports that we were issued, and the opinions related to the federal expenditures for city schools, as well as the final results for the single audit. So, before I go into what programs we tested and the results, I wanted to take a few minutes to kind of state what the single audit is. The single audit is a audit of the federal expenditures that were expended by city schools for fiscal year 2017. Audits are required to audit these expenditures in accordance with Federal Government Office of Budget and Management circular for single audit. And the reason why I mention that is because there are several audits that go on for federal expenditures. You have the USDE IG Office, you may have MSDE, you may have other various grantors that may conduct audits, and each one has a different scope. So, for our scope, as the independent auditor, we are limited to the Office of Budget and Management circular for single audit. So, when we, how do we pick the programs? There's a step process that we are required to use in accordance with the single audit. First, we look at the expenditures by dollar value, and we separate them out between, we call them type As, which is expenditures over $3 million, and then type Bs, which are expenditures of over $750,000, excuse me. Then, a risk-based approach is used to assess which programs are going to be tested. Some of the risk-based approaches relate to the last time the program was tested, as well as if the program is new, if the program is last year. Those are kind of straightforward, but we also look at environmental factors, such as if there's been a change in the program staff, if there are new internal controls. So, all of these items are put together and to determine which programs are audited for the fiscal year. For 2017, we selected Title I, and then another program was promoting safety and coping with skills in Baltimore City High Schools. That program has been, is new to city schools, and in the last fiscal year, it really started taking off, so more monies were expended in 2017. And as I mentioned with the risk factors, that was a program that we selected for testing because it was new to city schools. Okay, so now that we have our programs, the last step is to make sure that we are meeting the minimum qualifications of federal expenditures that are subject to testing. City Schools does qualify as a low-risk audittee in accordance with OMB, so therefore, we are required to test at least 20% of the federal expenditures for the fiscal year. Once the programs were selected, there are specific compliance requirements that we test to make sure that the program is running, again, as I mentioned, in accordance with the single audit, which is federal guidelines. And then, MSDE has a couple of things that they require us, or have asked us to look at, and we will look at those items as well as part of the audit. So, with both programs, the areas that are listed up there are the main areas that were reviewed during the audit. Given in mind that each program may not have each requirement that's listed, but the ones that are there are the main ones that are typically listed and audited as part of the single audit. So, once we have finished our testing, we're required to issue two reports. The first report was issued in relations to the CAFRA audit that was completed for the city, and that's the internal controls over financial reporting. This report is reissued when we issued a single audit report in accordance with OMB Single Audit Act. The next report is actually a review of the internal controls related to the federal programs that we tested. So, this report is directly related to compliance for Title I and compliance with the other program, which was coping skills for Baltimore City High Schools. There was an unmodified opinion related on compliance for the programs, and we had one significant deficiency for Title I, and that was based, that was related to the highly-qualified paraprofessionals, which formerly was known as highly-qualified teachers under the No Child Left Behind Act. And finally, in the report, we do have a schedule of federal expenditures of federal warrants, and what that does is show you all of the federal dollars that were spent by city schools during the fiscal year. So, the results for the 2017 single audit, total federal expenditures for fiscal year 2017 was $149 million. What we tested with the two programs that I mentioned before was $58 million, which was a coverage of 39% of the $149 million that was spent by the city schools during the year. We also do an update on the prior-year findings. As I mentioned before, Title I did have a finding for paraprofessionals, and that finding has been repeated for a couple of years now for the single audit for highly-qualified. And we label it partially resolved, and the reason being is that when we look at these findings, we also take in effect the reporting relationship with MSDE. And MSDE is aware of the city schools' effort to have all teachers highly-qualified, or the qualifications that the state has set for being highly-qualified, and what they have recommended is that city schools continue with their efforts, and that they continue to make progress with being fully compliant. So, when we take that into consideration, we realize that the efforts by city schools are being communicated and being reviewed by MSDE. So, that is the end of my presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And then, finally, oh, and I also, sorry, would like to thank our financial team, Mary Ann Cox, who is serving as Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and John Walker, our CFO, for their work with Clifton Larson Allen, and so, thank you to you and the full finance team for your work as well. Thank you. And then, finally, I want to encourage folks that February is officially Black History Month, as we work to make sure that all communities' history is part of everyday, everyday learning. We still want to encourage everyone within the public to connect with your local schools. There are a variety of programs going on this month, and so, we encourage you. I will be attending events throughout the city. Again, I want to emphasize that while this is officially the month to showcase, it in no way signals that there's only one month that we study African-American history. It is the history of all of our young people every day that verifies the learning experience. And then, I will close with letting the community know that on February 26th, we will be having a CEO Community Conversation at Brem's Lane Public Charter School. So, invite you all out, it will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on February 26th at Brem's Lane Public Charter. Thank you. Commissioner Kashani.
Great, thank you. I want to now review the consent agenda items to see if there's any items that are going to be pulled for question or discussion. I'll go item by item. 8.01, the calendar adjustment recommendations, we are going to pull that for presentation so the public can see the full discussion about the changes in the calendar because of weather days. Item 8.02, Board Policy ADC, Smoke and Vape-Free School Environment, second reader. Anybody want to pull that? That'll go by consent. Item 8.03, Board Policy EAB, Disclosure of Financial Impropriety and Improper Conduct, second reader. Any questions on that? That'll also go by consent. Items 8.04, 8.05, and 8.06 are going to be pulled for presentation as part of our portfolio review. Item 8.07, Waiver Request FKA, Baltimore School for the Arts, any questions on that? That'll go by consent. Item 8.08, Waiver Request FKA, Edmondson Westside High School, questions on that? That'll go by consent. Item 8.09, Waiver Request, Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys? That'll go by consent. Item 8.10, Waiver Request, Baltimore International Academy, questions? That'll go by consent. Item 8.11, Waiver Request, Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women, questions? That'll go by consent. Waiver Request, Empowerment Academy, item 8.12, questions? That'll go by consent. Item 8.13, Waiver Request, Patterson Park Public Charter School, questions? That'll go by consent. So, when we vote on consent agenda, we will pull items 8.01, 8.04, 8.05, and 8.06. There are two procurement items. 11.01, Clifton Larson Allen LLP, questions on that? That'll go by consent. And item 16.01, I'm sorry, item 16.01, Hogan Levels LLP, questions on that? All right, those will go by consent as well. And with that, before we have our comments from recognized groups, I want to acknowledge Councilman Robert Stokes is here. Sir, can you raise your hand? Sir, thank you. Thanks for being here. Is there any special recognitions or PEP appointments that you want to recognize?
No.
We're good? Okay.
Sorry, we do have PEPs.
You do have PEPs?
Because I missed it. Thank you.
All right. Great. Could you do that now?
Chief Grant Skinner, would you mind presenting this evening's PEP? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dr. Santelisa, we have two appointments to announce this evening. First, Lori Hines is appointed Interim Director for Suspension Services effective February 14th. I believe Lori is here. And second, Vesna Gruicic is appointed Managing Assistant Principal at Independence School Local One High School. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much for your flexibility, Chief Grant Skinner.
Okay, I'd like to invite our first guest speaker.
Madam Chair, did you vote on the consent? Did I miss that?
We don't do that yet. That comes later.
Okay.
You don't vote, you just decide on the items that are pulled.
Right.
We're good. I'm catching on to this. Our first guest would like to acknowledge Trish Garcia-Pila, the Chair of PCAP, Parent
Good evening, Commissioners and Administrators. Nothing earth-shattering this evening. Just to let you all know that policies ADC and EAB that are on the consent agenda, we did have presentations and give feedback to the offices while they were in development. And also, our meeting is this Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30, right here in this room. Our first presentation will be about, will be choice processes and protocols from the Office of Enrollment, Choice and Transfers, and more importantly, I think, right now, is the development of school budgets. We had requested from the CFO's office that they come this Thursday and present the same presentation that was presented at the budget forums two weeks ago, since folks kind of heard about it a little late, so we asked them to come back to PCAB, and they are coming. So, all budget questions that you have, you can come and ask this Thursday. That will be the second presentation, so if you can't make it until 7:30, you'll be on time and be able to get all your budget questions in. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Now, I'd like to recognize our second guest, Peggy Gladden, representing the BTU.
Good evening to the school board, board chair, CEO, fellow educators, parents, students. Thank you for the time, for allowing me to speak. My name is Peggy Gladden, as you heard, field representative for the Baltimore Teachers Union, speaking on behalf of President Marietta English. We just have a couple of items tonight to share with you. Since January, we have received disturbing calls from our members, who have shared concerns regarding principals not having enough substitute teachers in the schools. Many principals are dividing classes among grade levels, and teachers are expected to comply without hesitation or reluctance. This is in direct violation of the BTU contract, Article 7.7, that states, "Teachers shall not be required to take another teacher's classes except..." that states, "Teachers shall not be required to take another teacher's classes except in an emergency." And an example of an emergency are the following: a sudden illness of a teacher during the day, or awaiting the arrival of an obtained substitute, and other situations mutually acceptable by the teacher and the principal. We do realize that the flu and other illnesses have taken a toll on our colleagues and students alike, and our members have been accommodating in order to assist when emergencies occur. However, it is not their responsibility to continue to comply without hesitation or reluctance when principals fail to have enough substitutes to cover classes several times a day over multiple days. Also, finally, Working People's Day of Action. BTU and AFT Maryland will be taking a charter bus to the Working People's Day of Action in Washington, D.C. on Saturday, February the 24th. This is spearheaded by ASME. The rally will bring working people and union allies together in D.C. before the Janus versus ASME Council 31 case is heard by the Supreme Court on February the 26th. The case attempts to divide working people and limit the power and impact of all unions nationwide, and we are asking for your support. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gladden.
It's a comment. As a student, you, I see what you're talking about, and at times, we have classes where our teacher is not there, and we look around, and we're waiting for a substitute, and we're in there up to 15 minutes because there is no substitute available, and we have to find a place to go, or they put a hall monitor inside the classroom to look at the class so nothing happens, and I don't think that's acceptable. We should be having substitutes, so I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Peña and Ms. Gladden. We had no advanced sign-up for some of the other specially recognized groups, so I'm going to read the list, and if anybody from those groups is here and wants to comment, I'd like to give you the opportunity. PTA Council of Baltimore City, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Public School Administrators and Supervisors Association, City Union of Baltimore, Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, and Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. You're always welcome to let us know if you'd like to speak. Now I'd like to invite, as is part of the ongoing, the regular portfolio review process, representatives from Banneker Blake Academy of Arts and Sciences to make their presentation. Before, before they start speaking, I want to make a correction to how we're going to handle tonight's consent agenda. We are going to pull item 16.01, Hogan Levels LLP, and we'll vote on that separately from the consent. Thank you. Sorry for any confusion. So, welcome Carl and your team.
Thank you.
The typical five minutes for the portfolio review, so.
Sure. Thank you very much, Honorable Chair and Board Members and Madam CEO. I'm going to be quite brief in my remarks. There are a few members of our community, I know we have the five minutes, but there are a few members of the community who wish to give a reflection, short reflection, on the recommendation that we had received two weeks ago. I'm Carl Stokes. I am the Executive Director of the Banneker Blake Academy of Arts and Sciences. More correctly, I am the Executive Director of the Baltimore Education Trust for Young Men, which is the operator of the school. I just want to do these quick couple of things. Why don't I want to talk about academics of the school. By the way, we are here to request a full five-year renewal contract for the school. We believe that the strength and the progress and the stability of the school warrants that, and the efforts of the students, the scholars, the parents, the families, and our partners and our teachers warrant that. The Baltimore City Public School Review of the academics of the school show that we're doing better than most of our peer schools with our part testing scores at the 69th percentile for both English Language Arts and Math, 69th percentile for our peer schools. And the achievement growth score is at the 84th percentile in English Language Arts and 81st percentile in Math of all schools in our grade band. I want to speak just a moment about the methods that we've used to be able to do this. Let me mention that better than 90% of the students in our first three, sixth grade classes, we're at our first year of all three classes, better than 90% of each of our sixth grade classes have been below proficient, grade proficiency. That's better than 90% of each of our sixth grade classes have been below grade proficiency. Each year, what we have done is to hire tutors for our ELA and math classes, effectively reducing scholar to teacher ratio to 12 to 1. We have a 90-minute mandatory extended academic day, four days a week, and we have a mandatory four-week summer session for the last three years. Now, all of that in the last two years has cost us about $600,000. If we hear correctly, some in the district would wish us to have a large bank account at the end of the year. We've decided to spend the money that we've spent in the classroom, reducing class size, bringing in extra instruction, tutors, longer school day, summer session. The results are that in the two years, our academic numbers are very, very strong, very, very strong. And if one had asked us, instead of doing it that way, to be sure that we had a fat bank account, we would refuse. We would refuse. We would put the money where we've put it in the last two, three years, on the students where it matters, where it changes lives. We haven't just done academic service to our young people. We have changed lives and saved lives, and that's not, that's not hyperbole, not at all. Not in a city such as Baltimore, where so many institutions have failed black, poor children, particularly boys. Our boys, 75% of them live in poverty, who attend our school. I just want to mention one last thing, and that is that this issue of we're not being financially viable is a false narrative. It's not true. It's not true. It's actually disingenuous to keep leading with that. We were told we didn't have enough money in the bank. Well, that's not a part of the rubric, and frankly, we were not led to any guidance that we needed a particular amount of money in the bank before we started this. And when we asked after the fact, "How much money do you want us to have in the bank?", the answer is, "There's no particular amount of money." So it's some arbitrary loose standard that one wants us to have in the bank. As we speak today, as we speak today, in our third year, we have, as of January 30th, over $100,000 in the bank, no liabilities, no unpaid bills. We're on track in terms of all of the things we wish to do. In the first year of the school, we had 78 students for a number of reasons that I've laid out to some already. We didn't get our school until too late. We had 78 students. We lost 40 students because the school had not been designated, even though we had been promised. The school hasn't been designated. There were 40 students lost. We did everything we could. We had, and we decided to stay with more tutors, extra day with the summer program. At the end of that first year, we had a $214,000 deficit, most of it which was the rent to the school district. The school district said to us, "You can pay that back over the next two years without consequence. You can pay that back to us."
Carl?
"Without consequence."
Carl?
I'm sorry.
So, no, because we corresponded a lot about this, but if there's other people that want to speak?
Yes.
Because we really, this is a really long agenda, and there is a presentation that's going to be made about this. So if you want to...
Yes, I understand. It's just that you've said you're going to close you, and then you say you have five minutes to respond to that. I understand. Thank you. I got you. I'm with you.
That's...
I'm with you. No fight. Our accountant, please. Push the button.
I'm the external accountant for Baltimore Education Trust for Young Men. As Mr. Stokes has stated, the first year of the school operating was a tough year. It did have a deficit net first year, but the school has since turned it around. There was an agreement with a $214,000 debt that has since been repaid. There is no debt as of December 31st, 2017, that the school has, and they have net income for the last two years. June 30th, 2016 was net income, sorry, 17 was net income, positive net income, and right now, as of December 31st, 2017, the school has a positive net income and no debt, and has cash in the bank, as Mr. Stokes has stated.
Thank you. Ms. Lisa Harvin is the headmistress of the school.
Good evening. I submitted a written statement to the board, so I'm not going to take time. I would like to acknowledge the students, staff, parents, and community members who are with us in the audience. If you would please stand.
Thank you.
With a united voice we come. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Kevin Peters. I'm the Director for the Center for Excellence in Math and Science at Morgan State University. We have a partnership. We have, we have a partnership in which we offer professional development for the faculty at this particular school, and also, we are connected with an organization called BEST, Building Engineering and Science Talent, in which they have provided resources to have a number of STEM activities for those students, and we feel as though this is a worthwhile venture, and we really would like to see them renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Morgan State's a partner. I might mention that Mario Hodeman, who was the Deputy...
My name is Mary Ann Mears, and you have a letter that I addressed to Cheryl, talking about the experience that I have. I think many of you know me as a 30-plus-year advocate for arts education, and over this, this past fall, sort of my worlds came together. I'm a professional sculptor, and I had an exhibition at Ludue Gardens, and when I decided to do it, I said, asked them, I told them I wanted to bring Baltimore City Schools' kids there, and so we did. And Carl, when I asked him, "Oh, Carl, help me find some schools or kids", and he said, "We'll do it." And I've known him since he was on the school board and chaired the Arts Education Committee. We had the most wonderful experience, and the faculty was so impressive because they really dug in deeply, they prepared extremely well, and I believe the students, and some of them are here and may remember, and hopefully they have positive memories, but Ludue Gardens said this was a model for how, we had the seventh grade one day and the eighth grade another day, the model for how they wanted to work with schools. And their education, people were working with the faculty, and it was quite a wonderful experience.
Hello, my name is Trey Littlejohn, and I'm a Banneker Blake, I'm a Banneker Blake Academy Scholar, and a few things that I'd like to say about this school is that this is a good school, and the teachers here push us harder, even though some of us doesn't do that very well, but they push us harder to succeed, to get to a good high school and good college, because a lot of us want to go to Merveau or City or Dumba or schools like that, and they push us to succeed to higher expectations and above grade level. And also, Mr. Stokes, he always, he always tell us, "We are young kings, and we should succeed in life" and stuff like that. And we have great academics, and we have supplies, and I like that most of the teachers here like to help us learn instead of, instead of telling us or to get out the classroom, instead they keep us in there to help us learn and do what we need to do to get our grades up.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Maisha Blackwell, and I am a parent of a student at Banneker Blake who will be graduating this year and matriculating into high school. One of the unique experiences about Banneker Blake is that it is an all-boys school. It presents a challenge when you're looking at young males in the environment that they grow up in every single day. At this age group, being from sixth to eighth grade, being one of the most trying times emotionally, socially, academically. My child has found a home here, which for him is like a second family. His experiences and his words to me have been that the thing he likes most is that his successes are encouraged, where his limitations are met where he is, and trying to figure out ways of making his limitations more of opportunities for growth, as opposed to walls that he has to overcome. That's not saying that the school is without issues, but when you look at it from a holistic perspective, it's a unique opportunity that we have to develop a model for education for young boys that exposes them to things that they may not, that they would not be exposed to living in this city.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I thank you for your forbearance. Could we just have just two, and we're finished, please? Just two. Ms. Pat Houndle flew in from New York just for the meeting tonight. That's the only reason she's in Baltimore, and then one board member. That's the only reason she's in Baltimore, and then one board member. I apologize, but thank you. I don't mean to, but thank you.
I just, yes, just to note that we have, the regular portfolio review process, we try to be fair to all the schools, and the typical process is at this stage of the process, it's a five-minute full presentation. So, yes, we will do two more, but I, it's not like we're, I'm trying to be a pain.
I understand.
I'm just trying to respect-
I understand. We had no other opportunity to have this conversation with the board. I don't mean to offend. I don't mean to.
That's actually-
I don't mean to.
That's not true.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a neighbor of 1400 East North Avenue, and I am a school teacher, 2nd grade. I taught in Harlem. And my husband and I had the privilege of having a visit at Banneker Blake. We visited with the students, we visited with the teachers, we visited with the parents, some of the parents. And we were so impressed by what we saw that we asked the New York Community Trust to give a contribution to the school for its excellent, excellent work. The New York Community Trust does not give money haphazardly. There is an investigation to make sure that their financial status is a healthy one. They make sure that whatever the not-for-profit is, is sound and stable. And one of the quickest distributions from the trust was to Banneker Blake. And so, but the other thing I'd like to say quickly is about the young men who are here tonight. And the conduct of these young men is outstanding and is incredible, and they should be thanked, and the school teachers and the administration should be thanked for what they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to see you, Mark.
I'll make this brief. My name's Mark Steiner, I'm a board member at Banneker Blake. Very quickly, I want to say that this is also a matter of racial equity. It's a matter of racial equity because in our world of charter schools, those charter schools that are founded, started by, and have a lot of money from white business communities survive and prosper with a lot of funds. This school was started by people from the community, black people in our community, and have made a huge difference in the lives of the boys in that school academically and more. So to me, it'd be almost like a pedagogic crime to put this school in probation, to not fully allow it to go for the next three to five years as a charter school and to grow, because I think that the curriculum itself, this could be a model curriculum for the entire city, for the entire state, for the nation to look at as esteemed school in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Carl. Nope, no problem. Thank you very much. Councilman Stokes?
I now appeal to the board of commissioners to seriously consider the CEO's recommendation with one exception. Banneker Blake, a contract must be renewed for five years. Anything less is a disservice to the parents, the kids, and the community. Consider what the school has done for African-American boys in two years. To place them on a one-year probation is not a vote of confidence. A vote of confidence is a five-year renewal that says, "We believe in you." Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to turn to, sir, are you signed up for public comment? Yes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gregory Perkins. I'm the pastor of the St. Paul Community Baptist Church in Baltimore City. Our church has been in the city 68 years. I've been the pastor for 38 years. I'm here because our church, we're partners with Banneker Blake. For the past three years, we have run a mentoring program in, in our community where we have targeted the boys on the street. And we teach them personal responsibility, civility. We try to get them to appreciate the value of a good education. And we brought that program to Banneker Blake. I'm proud to be a partner with that school because I believe in the mission. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to turn to public comment. First guest is Patrick Cullen.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioners, CEO. My name's Pat Cullen. On March 2011, I founded U2 Can Inc. It's a minority-controlled nonprofit whose intent is to work on parental engagement. That's what I'm here to talk about. On June 9th, 2015, I went before the board, and I recommended that they commission a task force to work on parental engagement. One of the board members that night said, "That's a good idea. You, Mr. Head of the Parental Engagement Department, should do it right away if you're going to do it." It didn't get done for 15 months. So I came back for visit number two to urge again to do parental engagement. I would say that I'm here because there are a number of reasons why parental engagement task force would be a good thing now. Number one, in November 2016, the Office of Parental Engagement Director became empty, and it's stayed empty to this very day. And I don't know whether they can't find a person with good experience or what, but that slot is still open. So that's one reason to have a task force. The second is that the district appears to me has removed from its list of divisions the phrase "parent and community engagement." If you look up on the main website, that phrase is gone. So it implies to me there's some kind of constriction or something going on with parental engagement. The district's five-year plan, number four goal is, all students will benefit from increased family and community engagement. I think that if you have a task force, this would fit right in with that goal. And I don't know what you all have done during the first two years, but at any rate, this would fit that. The most important thing is that Maryland has a three-year federal grant program that says it's going to work on evidence-based strategies and interventions. That is perfect for Burke to work on because they can do the research to present to the district, here are what the evidence-based strategies and interventions are in the field of parental engagement. It's important because $45 million is going to get split up somehow or other, and I think if this district has a good strategy and intervention for parental engagement, it'll do well. Finally, if it would help, I would consider it a privilege, if you decide to do a task force, to assist in the formulation of the commission statement, and any communication has to go on with Burke. I would volunteer to do that, and I would thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen, for coming multiple times. Tonight, part of tonight's agenda is going to be a presentation of our family and community engagement strategy. You're correct that it's been under review. One part of the recommend, one part of the presentation is going to be about taking a look at the parent and community engagement, the parent-community councils. Is that the right phrase? Family councils. I had that right. Parent and family council. School-family councils. So is Sabrina here right now? Yeah, I would encourage you to have a conversation with her. I don't know what mechanism she's planning to do that, but I think that there's a direct recommendation on there right now to take a look. At this point, we're not going to establish a task force.
Thank you very much for the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next guest is Kelly Williams.
Hello, good evening. I've been an active volunteer for Banneker Blake since last year. It was my son's first school year last year. And starting out, I thought it was a great school. Now, not so much. We don't have parent support. That's number one. Number two is that for me to have a problem that my son hasn't received any services since March of 2017 for his IEP in math, that's a problem for me. And the fact that my, my son was assaulted inside of Banneker Blake by another student, and it was kind of, to me, it was swept under the rug. Nobody really came forward to say anything except for Ms. Lawson and Ms. Parrish that I've talked to. My son has to have surgery on March the 5th, and I just felt like me being an active volunteer since last year and me getting to know everybody in that school, it should have been handled a certain way. It should have been handled a different way. It shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have happened like that. And then I have a problem with my son having an IEP in math, and there's no certified teacher in math for them to teach my son what he needs. So do I think that Banneker Blake failed my son? Absolutely. Yes, I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, very much. Our next guest, any questions? Our next guest is Brittany Miller.
Good evening, everyone. My son, no, okay. My son has been a student at Banneker Blake Academy since the beginning, since his 6th grade year. We've had our ups and our downs with the school, but I guess what my main concerns with leaving the school open are still the lack of resource and not having someone to actually oversee the charter schools, to make sure that they're following the guidelines, not just about funding. It's way more than just funding. The lack of resources that they have there, like the parent before me said, there is an issue there with the mental health support. I feel like a lot of, a lot of it is the lack of education from the teachers and board members and mental health, the 504 IEP plans, and also safety of the school. I think that the school has a grand idea, it has a grand goal. I think that they have amazing teachers that have the ability to do some amazing things with the school. But I think that the lack of support and the lack of guidance from the board causes an issue for the school. It makes it a sometimes unsafe environment. And again, I can agree to the other parent where she said that when you have a student who has an IEP or 504 plan, it's not followed. And when you've been there for three years, and it's, and it hasn't been followed, the student kind of suffers. Next year, I'm really afraid for what's going to happen when Khalil graduates this year and he goes to the 9th grade. I don't feel like he's been equipped with everything that he needs to be successful in high school. Coming into the school in the 6th year, we, it looked to be really positive. The 7th grade year, I was still there, still trying to, still trying to go with the school. And, but this 8th grade year, I kind of feel stuck. There's been so many issues, the 6th and 7th grade year. I can't just pack up and leave and take him to another school because it's a mess. He has false grades and on his report card and all kinds of things. I've made this, brought this to the attention of who I thought were the appropriate channels, but it hasn't been addressed. So I think that opening the school, leaving the school open for another year as a probation period, I think that that's a good idea if they're actually going to have the resources and support that they need to be successful. That's what I think that the, the school needs. They need more resources and more support.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions? Our next guest is Rock Hudson.
Hello, school board. Good to see you again.
Hello, Mr. Hudson.
This is my 34th time coming, but I enjoyed coming. I commend the fine work that you are doing as a board, and I come to thank you for the listening opportunities that you've had at Pender Hughes School, that you've actually come out and you've listened to people and listened to parents, and I think that's a great idea. Also, I'm hopeful that the school will remain open. But just keeping the school open is just not the end of the issue. Keeping the school open with a clear strategy and a direction is most important, and that's something we got to consider because if not, the school will be back on the chopping block next year. The complaints that you've heard from these two parents are complaints that you've heard at many of our public schools, there are community schools that are not charter schools. And so it is nothing unusual to hear these kind of complaints because they go in public schools, charter schools, schools across America. If you know anything about Baltimore City, this is a, a difficult place at times to give and to serve, but we do it out of our love and out of our call. And I'm saying all that to say that I believe that, number one, Pender Hughes has a great opportunity to have a fresh start, a restart. And I think that restart can happen if we give it a chance with a fresh vision, a fresh look. And that look could be, that look could be, let me say it like this, and I don't want it for anyone, but that look, that fresh start could happen if we allow a public charter school to come. It's, it's a precedent, you've done it before, where you've had public schools that needed help, and you have allowed a charter school to come and see if it could give a second chance. Well, I say to you today, let's give the Freedom and Democracy Charter School a chance to come and be the operators of Pender Hughes. And we've been in our community, we've, we have community support. Our church has been there for 160 years. I've been a pastor of Ames Memorial for 10 of those years. Do you realize that when Pender Hughes could not afford to have an after-school program before there was a Humannum that came, before Drew Heiss come, Ames Memorial United Methodist Church provided after-school programming for that school? And so we have a long history. We take those kids to camp each year. We have kids from Pender Hughes who go to our camp, sponsored by the United Methodist Church. We also offer all kinds of financial aid to the schools to run their programs. Up to $20,000 have been given to that school in the last five years from our United Methodist agencies. So what I'm trying to say to you is that I believe that if you consider keeping the school open, consider keeping it open with a fresh direction. And that fresh direction could be the implementation of a charter school to lead it. Now, if it fails, then, then you can say, "I've done my best." But what happens if you don't give it a try? So let us do that. Let us give Pender Hughes a chance. Now, remember, you changed the name from Kelso, and my time is up, but Kelso, Kelso was a member of my church, a fine, a gentleman of our church, and it was changed in the midnight hour. Thank you so very much, but we're glad you gave it Pender Hughes, and give Pender Hughes a second chance by allowing the Freedom and Democracy Charter School to come and, and show what it can do. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Hudson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Hudson. And I don't want you to have to hold the baby stand, so please-
Oh, that's fine.
-as a mother of little girls, I don't want you to have to drop her. I do want to say that one of the things that we are looking forward to with the Pender Hughes community, with the Gilmore community, is crafting together a process whereby the community will be able to chart the direction of the school and have, I would say, significant input that would hopefully reflect the kind of partnerships that you just referenced with, with the school. So we're looking forward to that. As part of that process, we see it as more than just a one-year probation. It really is about working with the community together to craft a community school. So I just want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Here I am, here I am, you can send me if you need a servant, because I'm here to serve.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing, I do want to make sure that any parents, no, you're fine, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that any parents who do have concerns either about IEPs or grades or anything, we have staff available now who can meet with you. The chief academic officer is here. Deborah Brooks is head of special education here, so I don't want parents who have testified today to feel like there is no recourse or support. So I just want to make that available to people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next guest is Kim Truheart.
Good evening. Three minutes is not enough. Okay, let's talk about schools. We have sucky middle schools. And the fact that Banneker Blake is trying, okay, let's figure this out. Your job is not to test, right, and then weed out the weak ones. That's not your job. Your job is to bring the best educational outcomes to our children. Now, you have failed- Now, you have failed to do that. Failed, get that? Failed. You failed the test. They didn't fail the test. The test was biased to begin with, right, for them as a charter school. So when are you guys gonna figure out how to bring us a quality middle school for our children, especially the boys? And rejecting their approach means you didn't stick your foot in the water. When have you gone to them and helped them develop the protocols for a great middle school? Tell me when you sat down with them and helped them, right? Don't be, don't be judging them. Give them a chance. We need a great middle school. What are you gonna do? It should've never been approved as a charter to begin with. It should've been one of your innovative schools. We don't have a all-boys middle school. And so when somebody puts that kinda proposal on the table, accept it, embrace it, but think out of the box, 'cause right now, you are stuck and you haven't provided what our children need, and you better get it together. The other thing, okay, um, I'm testifying Thursday because I want some data from the school board, right? And I laid out a whole bunch of data, especially around our most needy children, homeless children, and I wanna know how many kids are in neighborhood schools versus charter schools. I wanna know what supports you're providing them. There was a test under two previous CEOs, or I don't remember how many ago, but they, they offered opportunities to use some of your McKinney-Vento money to help the families, to give the parents of the homeless child a bus pass so that they could go look for a job, because the federal dollars you get under the McKinney-Vento Act allow you to do that. But nobody wants to implement a long-term strategy to do that, 'cause that means you gotta work. That means you gotta care a bit about the homeless children in the city. And right now, the best that you can do, the best you have demonstrated is a friggin' taxi cab. Do more. Those children are the most needy in this system, and you better figure out how to step your game up to help them. I am pissed right now. I am very pissed. And whatever y'all are gonna testify to on Thursday, I'm gonna reject it, and I'm gonna continue to reject it. Produce the report on your own. We should not require a bill to be passed in Annapolis to get data out of the system. Give us the data. I'll withdraw the bill on Thursday. I don't need the ride to Annap, I don't even have transportation to get to Annapolis on Thursday, but I'm gonna figure out how to get there as long as y'all keep holding information from us. Give me the data, I'll withdraw the bill. Save me my Uber ride to Annapolis.
No idea what she's talking about. Our next guest is Sekou Casemo.
I didn't see Sekou.
My apologies, I was told I couldn't come through that door.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, Madam CEO, Commissioners. My pet peeves are safety, climate, and culture and curriculum. The guns that were recently confiscated from students, that is commendable. But what I wanna stay focused on is allowing our police officers to be armed in the school buildings. Last check, there have been 11 shoot, school shootings nationwide this year, 11 already. I was in Annapolis about two weeks ago advocating for that bill that'd be, uh, re- rejuvenated, that'd be presented again. I talked to about five delegates down there who say the ball is in y'all court. If y'all were promoted, then they would. It didn't get out of committee last time because they didn't get a lot of support from the school board. I've done legal research, writing and analysis, self-taught, untrained lawyer, and although I have above-average understanding of the law, not having gone to law school, self-taught, I still understand that there are some concepts that some people just don't grasp. Negligence is a major issue in civil lawsuits, and if there's an incident, God forbid, and the schools where somebody is shot, seriously injured, or killed, the survivors can allege negligence because it would've been predictable. That's how bad it is in the schools with these children bringing these guns to school constantly. We can't afford that. And come with me, our officers need to be prepared to deal with the worst-case scenario. And I'm convinced, based on the 68 years that I have lived in Baltimore and the people that I've associated with, and the mentality of a lot of youngsters in this city, it's just a matter of time. The school cannot afford them all time in our lawsuit, and y'all need to consider that, having these unarmed police officers in the schools. And as far as curriculum, I understand you can only provide the resources for our children to learn. We have to motivate them to learn. They have to come to school prepared to learn, they have to want to learn, because I know, I grew up poor, and I know what it takes to motivate our children to learn. They have to see themselves in the curriculum. They have to be able to identify with the curriculum. And once they learn who they are, where they're from, I'm talking about African-centered education, I know their self-esteem, self-confidence, race pride, race awareness gonna be through the roof. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you, Sekou. Our next guest is Keisha Goodwin. Oh, okay, we'll wait, it's fine. Sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we'll do. Um, we'll, we'll come back when Keisha arrives. Is Tine Smith here?
Hello, um, my son is a scholar at Bannaker Blake Academy, and, um, I just wanted to speak about the academic experiences we had with them, and, um, it was a rocky start, he was transitioning, he's in the sixth grade, but his teachers have been outstanding. I am very pleased with what he's learning, and I feel like it's either above or above his level. Um, there are times where he's missed classes or missed assignments. I can actually text message his teacher, and she's able to text me back, she's able to email me back, um, as well as another teacher. Um, there, with every school, there are ups and downs, and there's always room for improvement. There were items stolen out of his locker. Fortunately, they were returned. His glasses were stolen, but, um, if they were on his face, I'd always tell him they wouldn't have been stolen in the first place. Um, so I just feel like that Bannaker Blake should be given a chance to improve where they, um, need to improve, so that, um, the boys, our boys in Baltimore City can be given a chance.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Keisha? Good evening, Keisha.
Right. As a parent, homeowner, and educator, I am becoming more disturbed with the bureaucracy of the district. The inequities, controlled information, and agendas are apparent with the budgets, school autonomy, and practices by this district. This district is not Chicago, it is not DC, New Orleans, or New York. This is Baltimore. I want to first discuss the delivery of information to the community and public. Information from the district is overgeneralized. For example, during the budget process, mentioning the month for the community collaboratives in a presentation leaves the parents and community in limbo, yet there is a tentative schedule with actual dates. Another example, stating numbers that really doesn't pertain to the work at hand. It was stated during the FSF vote that there are 171 schools by our chief of staff. Commissioner Curran, Peter Curran firmly expressed that there is a need to close schools into combined schools. Let's first say that there's 123 traditional schools with two alternatives that operate under the FSF funding formula. Fifty schools or so have already been closed or combined, so to state that more needs to close is absurd. However, we are at 171 schools because as we are closing traditional schools over the last 10 to 15 years with one new school opening up, we have increased the number of charter schools from five to about 36 or so. If enrollment is declining, and it has been over the last decade, why are we opening charter schools? Now, I know in the last couple of years, we haven't, but prior to that, enrollment was declining, we were closing traditional schools, but yet we still opened up charter schools. Although I would really like to believe that the board care about all the children in our district, I have come to the notion that the practices such as how funds are distributed tells a different story, especially in regards to traditional schools. The FSF model funds 125 schools, but only allocate 550 million to 125 schools. But the charter model, which has the 30-something charters in other schools, allocates 950 million to those schools. Changes have occurred to the operational budget, change in poverty measures, and also going to a tiered system when it comes to the Title I targeted program. Where was the community to help make these decisions? I don't remember there being any community input. So my question is, how is Title I funds allocated to the district from the state? What is that formula? What is the direct cert formula that you use for charter schools and the direct cert formula that you use for traditional schools? How can you change the threshold for Title I target assistance to 45% when you only need 40% to become a Title I schoolwide? I just don't understand, and so I need clarity. Can we please have workshops on how all monies are allocated from special education to Title I and anything else? When it comes to paying our fair share, if traditional schools are paying about 200 to 250 for police or for, um, HR, then charter schools should pay the same amount. So for them to only have to pay 125 is not even equal to the 200 or 250 that traditional schools pay. This and other things demonstrates inequities in both types of s- school systems. So we need an equity policy and not an equity statement. So the more I research and dig into things, the more disturbing information I'm finding that has been done by the district.
Thanks, Keisha. Um, so I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that the, uh, if we have the, all the dates of all the budget collaborative community conversations, we should publish them, and I think those will be the appropriate times to ask questions about just, just distribution of Title I, et cetera, et cetera. Those are, those, you should be able to get those answers, and that's the perfect time to have those discussions.
I did, and it was only about the FSF budget.
We haven't, no, no, that was actually only focused on fair student funding formula. You're, you're correct about that, but when we start talking about the full budget, I think those questions, uh, are, are all relevant, and, and you should definitely bring them all to those meetings, but we'll, that, that, that schedule should be published as soon as we have it.
Okay, um, I've also asked about being on the committee for testing, for assessment. Haven't heard anything from the board. Something was supposed to be mentioned in January. We are now near the middle of February.
So I'm gonna, uh, I don't know who wants, that's not something the board can respond to.
Yeah, that would be a board piece, but the chief academic officer will follow up. Have you spoken to the academic office yet, Ms. Goodwin?
I've spoken with them in December sometime, and then that's when I was told that something is supposed to happen, was supposed to have happened in January, and now it is the middle, near the middle of February.
Okay, so what we'll do is we will make sure the chief academic officer will follow up directly. I don't know what the planned follow-up, 'cause I wasn't part of that original discussion, but, uh, Mr. Conley will circle back with you on that.
Okay, and who will I be in contact with so that my questions can be answered?
You should submit those officially in writing.
Send them to the board office.
Send them to the board office.
To the school board?
To the school board office. That, that, that way, they get, when the school board office gets it, the whole board sees the questions as well as the staff. That's the, that's the best way.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Keisha. Our next guest is Carla Blackwell.
Um, I would like to first open with, um, a letter of support for Bannaker Blake on behalf of the Community Partner Arts Every Day, of which I am the Schools and Partnerships Manager. To whom I may concern, this document serves as a letter of support for the continuation of the charter for the Bannaker Blake Academy for the Arts and Sciences, a public charter school for boys in grade six through eight in Baltimore City. Bannaker implements and strives to strengthen their STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics curriculum. As the director of an organization whose primary programmatic focus supports arts integration and increased student achievement through access to the arts, I feel it is most critical to maintain and foster the growth of schools such as Bannaker. Through our partnership with Bannaker, students gain increased artistic knowledge and skill, which enlivens the arts arm of the school's curricular framework. The young scholars at Bannaker are excelling academically, socially, and personally due to the commitment of their administration, teaching staff, parent, and community engagement. From personal experience, I deeply understand the need for and the undeniable impact of charter schools and what they have on the students in Baltimore City. With this, I implore you to consider the maintenance of Bannaker's charter so that they may continue on the path of academic excellence and the development of successful young men. This is respectfully signed by Julia DeBusselo, who was the executive director, and verbally co-signed by myself, Schools and Partnerships Manager. Um, and if I may, step out of the role of community partner and also speak as community member, uh, former professor, uh, and academic facilitator, teacher at Bannaker, um, I think a vote against the maintenance of this charter will do a disservice, and I know that sentiment has been spoken, and I wanna echo that. Um, show me a school in Baltimore City that does not have its issues. Um, so I understand the gripes and grievances of parents that may come forward this evening. However, shutting the school down is not a way to address them. It is also not a way to address where the students are, where the scholars are, and where they can go. Um, so I implore you personally to continue with this charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Blackwell. Our final, um, public speaker is, um, sort of a joint with Evan Roberts and John Gray. You said it right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got that wrong.
Um, I'm Ivan.
Oh, my name's John.
And we're pouring back on the Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Week of Action.
Um, so we both are organizers for the Baltimore Art Project, and we, uh, along with, um, BMO Caucus and, um, a few other groups, we participated in the Black Lives Matter Action Week, and, um, it was just basically a different event every week, this past week, and, uh... And I guess we could just go down the events. On Monday, at Weston High School, it was an education audit and where one of our, some, the last. Yeah, one of the people who spoke earlier, Keisha, her and some other people from BMO created different, their own form of like how they see education, their own draft that she presents at all these, at every meeting. Tuesday, there was an educational seminar at Loyola University, basically talking about how we teach black students or how we teach in like the workspace. Wednesday, okay, Wednesday, it was, there was a meeting at Emerson High.
Yeah, Emerson High School.
Yeah, Emerson High School. And basically, they, what did they do?
It was a video on police brutality, if I remember correctly. Thursday, there was a panel at Liberty Elementary School with Kim Truheart and some other people from BMO. And there was a panel speaking on education.
And then on Friday, there was open mic, there was open mic at the Liverwell Building. So basically, it was just a platform for young folks to come out and talk. But the reason why we mention all this is to emphasize or to push forward the importance of black education and the importance of like social education in schools. And that's why this Week of Action was in schools. And it goes along with a lot of the work that BMO Caucus and the Algebra Project does with things like NSBR, our National Student Bill of Rights, and things with our Three List of Demands, or you know, restorative justice in schools, black education in schools, and stuff like that, and better funding for our different schools. And that's, the Week of Action just basically highlighted all of that stuff. And that's why we wanted to come up here and report back on that in a sense and kind of push forward again the work that we've been doing.
Questions?
Thanks, thanks for sharing that overview. I think social justice and social action is part of, you know, our education is really important. What did you learn from the week? What was the most effective of the five that was really helpful for you to go day by day? That you tried five different events? What did you learn? What did you felt like went the best? And what did you, what did you learn from that for next year?
I mean, for me, it was Monday with the curriculum audit. That was a community event where teachers, parents got to express what they believe students should be learning, which should be implemented in schools. So that for me was able to see like how everybody perceives the school education and the school system.
Two things. One, we forgot that Saturday, there was a dinner. And the dinner basically was kind of wrap up the week and just teachers, students, just different things. But for me personally, it would be Thursday, the education seminar, basically, it basically talked about our evaluation of teachers, right? So like, how can we have teachers teach these like historically, these historic curriculums without being, in a sense, like right themselves, right? Like, we can't have teachers who believe that racism is over teaching a history class, like, things like that just aren't productive, right? So it was the evaluation of our teachers and the evaluation of our curriculum. That's probably what's most important for me, you know. More so kind of stepping back from just why race of teachers matters, but like mindset and the type of teacher that's teaching matters and stuff like that.
Ronald?
Gentlemen, I want to commend you for coming tonight and representing yourselves and advocating for your students, for your peers. I want to commend you for that. And Jonathan, if it's all right, I'd sent to Ashley, your student representative, your email address so that you can connect with her and make sure that more students are also involved in that particular organization, the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, and that advocacy. And then also, I'm still waiting to hear from you, and I told you that earlier. I really do want to partner and make sure that we track what happens with college and career with both of you. I'm still waiting on that response, all right? So I want to follow up. This is very active. I want to make sure that we partner together to make sure that we can ensure your success in the future so that you can benefit not just Baltimore, but the world, right? I'm waiting for that. All right?
Thanks, gentlemen. We're lucky to have such a strong Baltimore Algebra Project chapter in Baltimore. And we appreciate the work you're doing. Anything else, anybody? Good, thank you. So that, you good?
I would just like for everyone to know, just because the topic of middle school came up a couple of times this evening, in particular, given the vote that the board will need to take tonight around Banneker Blake. And I would like to say, and the Chief Academic Officer can speak further about this if there's interest, we have begun actually a middle grades working group specifically to look at middle grades education within Baltimore City. We actually do have, I would say, a number of really highly desirable and successful middle grades programs within the city, but not enough. But for folks who are interested in hearing about the work of that committee or being involved with that, I encourage you to reach out to Mr. Conley, our Chief Academic Officer, as the work of that committee broadens past just planning and actually involving other members. So if you have interest, please let the CAO know. And I will turn it back over to you, Chair Kashani.
Great. I'm not going to call for a motion to vote on the consent agenda, but before we do, I want to remind, we're not voting on, because we're pulling them, items 8.01, 8.04, 8.05, 8.06, and 16.01. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the items on the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner Bondima, second. Seconded by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes seven zero. Okay, with that, we're going to start discussion on items that were pulled from the consent agenda. So I'm not sure which staff person is making the presentation on the calendar adjustment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dr. Santelisis, I'm Casey Mango, the Special Assistant to the Chief Academic Officer.
Laura Jones, Manager for Teaching and Learning.
And so tonight, we wanted to bring to your attention a request to make an adjustment to our proposed, to the calendar. As you know, City Schools has closed three times this year due to inclement weather. And as we were looking at options in alignment with, we know, making up the instructional time for students, the professional development that we've had scheduled on February 16th, March 16th as well. Looking at those options, wanted to propose an adjustment to the current approved calendar. Those recommendations chiefly are to convert March 16th, which currently stands as a systemic professional development day for teachers, into a half-day of instruction for students, making up a day of instructional time for them. To convert April 2nd from a holiday, it's currently the last day of our spring break and Easter Monday, with permission from the state, into an instructional day for students. And then we would also convert June 15th, which was originally proposed and is the last day of school, into an instructional day for students as well. So that is the proposal for the conversion of those days.
Do you want to add something, Dr. Santelisis?
I was just going to say, thank you, Casey and Laura.
No, great. Questions on this proposal? Commissioner Canham?
Probably the most asked question. If you go around town right now, what's going to go on with the calendar? So I appreciate this. You said it's Easter Monday that you're asking a waiver on. Do we know a timeline from the state that they'll let us know?
Yes, so we, pending board approval, we would put forth our request, and then February 27th is the state board date. So we would look for a response from them on February 27th.
Other questions from the board on this proposal? Okay. Motion to accept the proposed calendar adjustments? Moved by Commissioner Bondima, second. Are you okay? Seconded by Commissioner Canham, all in favor. Ronald, are you voting on the calendar adjustments or no?
Yes.
All in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Bondima, are you in favor of the count? Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Just as a note, the request ultimately has to come from our board, so we'll work with your board office in order to submit that to the state. Yes.
The official, the official request to the board, now that we've had this process, I mean, to the state, to the state board has to come from the board. Now that you all have approved it, staff will work with the board office staff to craft it. That's all she meant.
Yes, that's all. Just wanted to make sure you knew. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Next, we'll, are we okay over there? Ronald, do you have a question?
Are we going to have to come back to this in the event that there are more inclement weather days?
But the reason it's important to do it right now is because we have to keep up, and we'll have to get a waiver for the first, for the first change. But yeah, if it's snow and ice and other problems, then yes, we'll have to come back. I'd like to ask Angela Alvarez to come to make the, we'll take them in order. We'll do Banneker Blake, then Lois T. Murray, and then William Pinderhughes.
Because this is a legal process, the board has a script that they use that allows them to vote differently. But there's certain language that we have to read in order. So just want to flag that for board members, when you look at your script, you're going to start lower with the renewal, and then we'll come back to the, to the, to Banneker Blake. Then we'll come back to the Sandtown.
I'm sorry, so you're taking them out of order?
The order, my, the order that we have is slightly different than the order that you have it as listed as the board agenda items. So we're going to start with Banneker. I'm just flagging that when you look at your script, start where you see Banneker.
Oh, that's what we have as first as well. We have Banneker. Okay, that's why I was confused, because that's the order that we have.
That you have, okay. Sorry, thank, sorry. Okay, so as part of our portfolio review, already three to five years for charter schools and other operators, City Schools conducts a review. It's based in our board policy, IHB, and it's accompanying REG, IHBRA. Part of the policy, we look at three key areas, student achievement, school climate, and financial management and governance. A normal timeline for presenting is on November 14th, 2017. At that time, when we originally presented the other schools who were going through the renewal process, we did not have sufficient financial information to develop a reading for the financial management piece of the review. So at that time, we recommended, we worked with the operator to get the audited information. On the December 19th board meeting, the board went ahead and voted to defer, to wait, to allow time for us to receive that additional audit information as well as for our finance team to be able to review that information. On January 23rd, once we've had that information, we formally presented the recommendation for Banneker Blake. And tonight, the board is voting on the recommendation. So the, so the presentation. So based on the operator renewal findings, it is, so originally, so the recommend, the, sorry, it got thrown off by the order. Sorry. So in academic performance, the school received an effective rating. In climate, they received a developing rating. And financial management and governance, it received a not effective. Banneker Blake is a middle school and that serves students in grade six through eight. In particular, some particular areas to note. So they were not effective in the financial management and governance section, which considers a review of the school's audits. And it showed negative net assets for the last, for the two years for the audits that we have. They're also, at the end of the, June 30th of 2017, the most recent audit we had showed a low cash reserve. So based on that, that review, which is the same review that finance conducts and has conducted as part of the renewal process, they got a not effective in that category. It's about the ratio, so there's a lot about the cash on hand. But the key thing that concerns finance in terms of the viability is the ratio of liabilities to assets. And so that's the negative net asset that we see for two years. In operator capacity, they also received the not effective. And that's based on a review of their grant management over time, which has had some challenges. Also notices concerning upperman and issues with following key district, state, and local guidelines. They were highly effective in park achievement, which assesses the change in student achievement over time for math and ELA. And they were effective in their absolute park scores for math and English Language Arts. They were also not effective in students with disabilities, which is looking at the school's practices for implementing their programming regarding students with disabilities and the achievement of students with disabilities within the school. So it looks at both how the school's implementing that, and there are a number of concerns there. So based on the operator renewal findings, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Baltimore Education Trust Fund for Young Men Incorporated to operate Banneker Blake Academy of Arts and Sciences be renewed for one year with conditions set and reviewed by the CEO or CEO designee regarding the school's special education practices, finance, operations, and facility.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
So before I call for a motion, I want to take any comments or questions. And I want to thank Carl and his team for presenting to us tonight. Thank you for that. Comments, questions? We'll start with Commissioner Bondima, then Commissioner McFadden, and then Commissioner Canham.
Thank you, Commissioner Kashani. I'm going to try not to make this too long. I have a, but I want to say personally, as a citizen of Baltimore and as a, as a mother of two daughters and a son, I have deep feelings for educating all of, all our children of Baltimore, but especially our young men. There's, our young men have difficulty getting through education. I know that I have one, and it's been a challenge. And he's successful. However, we have to remember that, what's old saying, you have to take a village? I know that the difficulty it is to have a school with all males and financial difficulty. But I think that we really have to struggle to do whatever we can to make the school successful. And as a board member commissioner and as a scientist, I'm putting myself out there to say, whatever it happens with the situation, I want to put myself out there to say I will help to assist this school to get where you need to be. Okay? And I just want to see, I just want to see whatever we need to do to work with your school and you to show us that it can be done, that these boys can be successful. And I'll leave it there, let other people speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondima. Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. So with the recommendation for the year, I just have concerns about will that be enough time for us to see any growth in the areas that have been recommended for this year with the CEO? It raises a very big concern for It raises a very big concern for me, for a school to have several concerns with compliance with special education. That is a big concern with me when we're thinking about equity for all students. In the event that there are things that happen in the school that warrant special ed services, or meeting, or things like that, it's important that we stay on top of that type of compliance. And then school leadership, you know, will we see some stability in school leadership in, in a matter of a year? That's just a concern that I have. And then recruitment for enrollment, you know, will the school be able to recruit and, and work with their partners to make sure that students are enrolled in that school so that they can offer the best program possible to those young people? I'm certainly in support of making sure that those young men at that school have the best education possible, but we also have to think, you know, long-term strategy and what impact we're really going to have with these young people while they're at this particular school.
Thank you.
And if the, the community, I'm sorry, if the community is in support, I think to Commissioner Bondima's point, it is important that the entire community continue to get involved, but we've got to raise money, you know, and, and there has to be a recruitment effort that is extremely strong. And will a year, will we be able to do that in a year? It's my, that's my question. If we're looking at school leadership, if we're looking at growth, does that really give a principal or a school leader, or their board, or whoever, the time that it really does take to establish strength there so that we can really see some growth?
Commissioner Canham, then Commissioner Frank?
Thank you, Commissioner McFadden. I just want to build on one of your points, and it's the last one on the slide. Can you just elaborate a little bit more? I was as well concerned with the lack of services given to students with disabilities. What percentage of the school has disabilities? Can you give me more detail about, you know, what, what we saw? Were there any trends, anything, you know, was it one classroom? Was it across the board? Can you talk to me about what we found on, with students with, with disabilities?
I'm actually going to ask Deborah, if she's in the room to join me. Deborah Brooks is our executive director of the Office of Special Education. Their office actually conducts the review on special education.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education. Good evening, I'm Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education. Some of the trends that we found for the students that are receiving special education services, we found that the services were being implemented by teachers or long-term substitutes that were not qualified special educators. We also found that for some of the students that were receiving special, special education services, their IEPs were not being, IEP meetings were not being held within timelines. We found that IEPs were remaining in draft, so they weren't closing out the IEPs within timelines. There were overdue annual, so compliance, a number of compliance issues for those students.
And Trevor's pulling up the percentage.
Hi, I'm Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives. And that's why fifteen sixteen Bannakers, students with disability population is twenty-eight point two percent. And twenty sixteen seventeen is twenty-six point nine percent. To give you an idea, district-wide in middle school grade, sixth through eighth, fifteen sixteen is eighteen point one percent, and sixteen seventeen is eighteen point four percent.
So it's a big difference.
Some board members had a hard time hearing you. Could you just say the percentage per year of students with disabilities, please?
Sure. For Bannaker, in fifteen sixteen, it was twenty-eight point two percent. Sixteen seventeen was twenty-six point nine percent. District-wide in middle school, fifteen sixteen is eighteen point one percent, and sixteen seventeen is eighteen point four percent.
Thank you. Commissioner Frank?
First, I want to congratulate the school and its students and teachers on the outstanding park scores. It's very impressive, and I think many of us find it very compelling. I want to follow up on Commissioner McFadden's question in terms of, what does it mean to get a year extension? And Angela, if you could sort of describe the sequence of things that happened for schools that have to participate in choice or lottery, decisions that parents have to make, when they have to make it, and at what point would the district determine publicly that this school has achieved the benchmarks that we're setting out for it?
Yep, so charter lotteries are, actually, last week, or when families made selections for charter schools. It would be ongoing through the spring, so the, the big opportunities around that. The choice process went from December until January is, is when that, the, the main part of choice. But again, there's a second round of choice that happens in April. And so we'll see a lot, a lot of people with their names in different hats. So we'll see a lot of that shake out and change over time as we get closer to the summer, where again, there's another big influx of people making choices at schools. So in terms of enrollment, being able to meet enrollment goals, they should be doing that from now until the beginning of September, before we get to nine thirty, really making sure that they're reaching out and calling families and continuing to do that recruitment to get the numbers up. So it's key that that's happening. There, with the special education concerns, they have to fix those right away. Those, those actually can't stay lingering. There are timeline requirements, there's IDEA requirements, there's all sorts of requirements. And so, you know, they have a specialist that's assigned to their school to ensure that that team meets those requirements and addresses those concerns of family, so that has to be addressed right away. There are some other concerns around staffing, so we would actually have them this year correct some of those, so there are people who are in temporary positions that I would suggest the CEO order them to move them into subpositions because of timeline requirements around that. We also talked about ensuring, because there are a number of staff who are not certified, that are given instruction to students with differing needs, that we will work with the Office of Special Education to require, so charters are not required necessarily to attend our PD, but we would require professional development for that entire staff, particularly in the area of special education, because that's, that's a big concern. Not only do the trends that Deborah see point to that, but the complaints that we see, the parent complaints that we, that we come in, mention special ed frequently. So I think it's just something that this, that staff needs training around, so that would be a requirement. So there are a lot of things that we could put in place and need to, frankly, put in place now so that by this time, we're coming back around during the normal review process, which would be, you know, the November, December, when we bring formal recommendations to you, there would be time to cure the problems that we see. Same thing with some of the Title I issues. So there are things that, it just has to be addressed this year, that it actually can't wait to next year. So there are time, there's time to fix those issues. In terms of, part of the reason why we mentioned the cash on hand is the school's located in a temporary facility. So they have the facility for next year, but after that, they don't. So they have to secure a permanent location for that facility for members of the public. Charter schools are required to secure their own locations. And so that would be one of the requirements, is essential. So the concern with the amount of cash they have on hand, because what striving to not effective is that ratio of assets to liabilities. But the concern about the amount of cash they have on hand is, do they have enough dollars to ready a facility? So part of the requirements would be setting actual cash amount three months operating so that we can assure they're in a better position to be able to, to deal with that, as well as having a requirement that they have some sort of written commitment, they may not have a lease, but some sort of written commitment for a facility for the, as a permanent location. So those are all things that could be accomplished by the time we come back again.
Commissioner Frank, you wanted to ask a follow-up? Dr. Stelis, do you want to add anything?
Oh, I'm going to wait till the end, I didn't know.
Oh.
Just, I just had a question about the recruitment. It seems that they aren't at capacity. And you talked about a lot of stuff, so it was very helpful to know that some things can happen immediately. I want to know if there's any support given to them as to how to recruit students or, or if there are other charters we could pair them with to do some learning on how to do that.
So we, we definitely can make some recommendations around operators who do a good job of recruitment and some of the strategies that they use in the past. The Office of Enrollment has actually provided support, particularly in that opening year. So they were able to actually have space within the Office of Enrollment to recruit during that summer, when we get a lot of families who are looking for schools, as well as at some of the other events that happen over the summer, as families are looking for choices. So that's something potentially we could do again. It's not a normal thing that we do, it's not a normal thing that we offer, because again, it's part of the responsibility of the operator to do that recruitment. But we definitely could pair them with and make recommendations around schools who do a good job at that.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Canham?
The timeline, again, you get, that was a very long answer to Andy's question, which I appreciated all the detail, but by December, which is when we normally do portfolio recommendations, there would be, we intend to have, you know, an extension or a recommendation to close at that time, because it's a one-year renewal, is that the timeline we're working on?
Yeah, yes, so I think the board would be thinking about whether or not they're, the same, would you renew the contract, or would you?
Yeah, because then they would be available to go into the choice process. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bondima, did you have a question about capacity?
No, I was asking, what is the capacity for the school?
With their cap?
Did they lose forty students?
Yeah, they've, they've lost some students this school year.
Their, their cap this year is three hundred and twenty-five students. Their official nine thirty enrollment is two hundred and sixty.
Two hun, what?
Sixty.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
And they were at two hundred and twenty-six students as of February sixth. So they lost some students during the school year.
The, the one thing that I would say, and it's just underscore, and Angela and the team did a wonderful job, so I actually don't really need to say much else. Part of the driver behind this additional year is looking at the areas where the school needs growth. And, you know, one of the things that I will say is that the academic performance of the school has not been in question. I have visited the school. But I will also say that part of the responsibility of a public educational institution is stewardship of funds, is making sure that all young people, to Commissioner McFadden's point, all young people, not just those who supposedly belong in that culture, but all young people, even those with disabilities, are adequately taught and served. It is the responsibility of a public school to make sure that there are qualified staff. And so that part of what this frankly, change and adjustment in the recommendation signifies is an acknowledgement that there is quality elements of this school, right, that are occurring. But as the steward of public dollars, of public trust, and one who has been charged with in all schools, not just charters, in all schools, right, and, and Dr. Brooks, are you officially doctor now? Dr. Brooks can attest to the fact that we have to work with IEPs for all young people, right? This adjustment in the recommendation was taking into account the positives that have occurred at the school while not shirking the responsibilities of the oversight, right, of those, those qualifications, those codes that we must meet. And then secondly, I also want to say that there are, and we will have, ongoing conversations with the board and the staff at Bannaker Blake. I will say that, that the principal has been incredibly open in my conversations with her. But I also want to point out that there are operator responsibilities. And while I think Ms. Alvarez and Dr. Brooks have pointed out areas where we are absolutely willing to point in a particular direction, when we talk about support, I think that we do need to keep in mind that that is the purpose of having an operator. The purpose of having an operator is to provide those supports for that school community, for that staff, and to address those parent needs. We absolutely will come alongside, but I think that we need to remind the public that that is one of the key differences between a charter, operator-run school, and one that is a traditional school. So what we are saying, what I am saying, what staff is saying with this recommendation adjustment, is we acknowledge that there is great promise, and you heard it from the young people, you heard it from some of the parents this evening. But we believe that, given that track record, we are willing to give an additional runway for elements that can be addressed. If this were about a fundamental educational flaw, then the question about one year would absolutely be valid, and I would have great trepidation, if proposing at all, the extension of, right, this charter. But I cannot, nor will I, ignore that there are state and federal law that back the areas that we are flagging for the school. They are not non-consequential. There's a reason why we have IDEA, and why parents of students with disabilities fought within federal law to have code to protect those students. And so we will continue to do that. Now, I, I believe in the conversations that we have had with the board, with the community, that there is a willingness to accelerate proficiency in these areas. And so that's why we are extending. But I do want to remind folks that most charters in this country still, unless the data has changed, fail because of financial management. So we are supporting, we believe, after meeting with the board, that they have, again, that runway, that they may have a financial approach or plan that would help to rectify some of that, but there are other issues here that have to be addressed. So I, I just want to put that in the frame, that the reason why we're even having the discussion about an extension versus closure is because of the hard work going on with teachers and young people every day. But that hard work will never supplant the responsibility to oversee public dollars and to fulfill mandates that were won in courts of law, and I won't cite educational law. There is a reason why students with disabilities and their families had to go to court to be able to win the right to be educated to the level that they are entitled to. So I think that we, I, I feel confident about this recommendation. I am incredibly hopeful, but I will not reduce standards for any young people, particularly young African-American males of color. So if we're going to have a discussion about racism, let's be clear that we are promoting excellence in all areas and all young people being served, because that's the responsibility of a public school system, and that's the responsibility of Baltimore City Public Schools.
So with that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Berkeley to make a motion. Yes. Angela, Angela stated the recommendation, and the CEO concurred, so we've done that. Now, we just, yeah.
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendation and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given during public comment session.
Can you start over?
Yep.
That's okay.
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendation and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given during the public comment session, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHB and Administrative Regulation IHBRA, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
My second.
All in favor of the motion as presented? Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Kashani, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson, all opposed. Commissioner Canham, motion passes six to one. Oh, I understand what you meant about out of order. So, can we now discuss Lois T. Murray?
So, it's, thank you. Sorry, it completely threw me off, so it kind of started in a weird way. So, for the record, I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. We also had a couple recommendations that we brought forward through the normal portfolio process that we deferred. And so, we're bringing up date on those. In that annual process, we look at a range of things and considering recommendations for schools. At that time, we had a recommendation to change, and maybe I should pause.
Okay, Angela, I think we're good.
So, at that time, we had a recommendation to change the grade configuration of Lois T. Murray from an elementary program, from an elementary-middle program to an elementary program per our 21st Century Plan. Tonight, we're going to actually pull the recommendation from the Board's list of recommendations. Since that time, we've had some meetings with the community, as well as, she actually, actually, I don't know if it's the right way, but the head of our Office of Special Education around the recommendation. And we'll like more time to explore what makes the most sense for this school community. Lois T. Murray is a separate public day school. So, the needs of this population of students are unique in that, so there are unique possibilities between keeping the flexibility of having a middle-grade seats versus not having it. So, it's something that we just want to look at a little bit more. And also do more engagement with families. A lot of families are concerned about that middle-grade transition for this population in particular, who has different needs. And so, we, Lois T. Murray is scheduled to move into the Walter P. Carter Building per 21st Century. When we look at the EAP package that governs the design of the building that the Board approved, there's flexibility in that design that allows either grade configuration to work. So, we really want to study the issue to make sure it makes the most sense in meeting the academic and emotional needs of this population. And do a lot more engagement with families around what programming looks like at Lois T. Murray. The comparable program that is a middle-high program is our Claremont program, which is scheduled to, it's also part of 21st Century, to move into the Patterson facility. So, Walter P. Carter is a more elementary-middle program, and the other ones are more secondary. So, there's benefits to either approach. So, that's why we're pulling it.
So, it's my understanding that
Sorry.
we don't need to vote on that. You're essentially pulling a recommendation, so it's, it just is.
So, we're pulling it. There is a possibility that we, after studying, may come back next year
Okay.
and bring this grade configuration change.
Okay.
We may not. So, again, we're committed to engaging families more and also just having that review of academics.
So, now we'll talk about William Penderhugh's.
Yep. So, also during that process, we brought a recommendation to close Penderhugh's in the summer of 2018. We are revising that recommendation so that the Board would be voting on closing a school in the Sandtown community in the summer of 2019, so at the end of next school year. The reason why we want to do that, so I think the community recognizes, and we recognize, there is a challenge in terms of the number of young people that live in that community. So, it doesn't really support having two schools. But, we want to make sure that we are really working with our community members, parents, and other stakeholders around looking at what education could look like in the Sandtown community and do a process led by our Family and Community Engagement Office, with support from academics and others on the team to really do a deep dive around what a community school in Sandtown could look like and meet the needs of that community. So, we will engage, we start, we've already kind of started meeting with members of that community, and we will continue to do that throughout this school year into next school year. It is the recommendation of the CEO that William Penderhugh's remain open in school year 2018-19, and that further study, including engagement of the Penderhugh's and Gilmore School Communities be conducted and one of these schools close in the summer 2019.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Questions, comments, clarifications? Commissioner McFadden?
I have a question, and it may not, I have a question about the school leadership at these schools. Can I ask that question to the Chief of Schools?
Sure, and if it's, if it, I would go ahead, Commissioner, and ask that question. If it gets into detailed personnel issues, then Chief will say that. But, you should certainly feel free to ask.
I'm just curious to know the school leaders, how they are feeling about this, these proposed changes?
Good evening. I'm John Davis. I'm the Chief of Schools. I mean, I think what's been positive is some of my first discussions with them. They had already been collaborating and talking about the fact that both of the schools didn't have as many kids and didn't have as many students as they initially wanted. So, they've been a part of the discussion for a while and even talked amongst themselves.
Good, thanks. Mr. Cannon?
I just am really pleased at how this all played out. You know, like what Mr. Davis said, is that people came together and were kind of proactively coming up with a solution. We listened. We're giving them some time to figure it out. But, it's also, it could be a model for us moving forward as we're going to have to get more, you know, difficult decisions within the community to think about combining schools, but giving them the time and the empowerment to kind of come up with a plan, realizing our kind of inevitability. So, I just want to think about how we can learn from this as much as possible.
Yeah, I agree with that. We were actually meeting internally to think about how we really look at this process. I think the more that we have community investment and community involvement, the better the recommendations are and the better the decisions that you ultimately make are. So, I agree.
Commissioner Richardson?
I just wanted to also say, having visited a school, that kids were kind of thrust into the school, and so there was no ownership. It really is important to get that buy-in early. And so, that there's a process for the students who are going to be going to this one school to have an opportunity to meet one another prior to school opening up so that they can form some relationships that way as well.
Yep, that's part of the planning. So, we're also working with Nicole Price, who is in charge of 21st Century. And they've done a lot of, they have like a template for how to do that. But, we're also looking at what other people are doing nationally as part of that process so that we are better about it. And I also just want to acknowledge on the record while I'm talking, it was young people, too, that were a big part of changing this recommendation. And just want to keep reiterating that, that their voices matter. And these are, these are elementary students, elementary and elementary-middle students. So, they're vital. So, I just want to say that.
Yeah, I don't have any need to repeat what Commissioner Cannon said because I was feeling the same way. And I would acknowledge Reverend Witherspoon, and thank you for the role you played in coming and speaking. And your son was here and other partners who may be here. I just might not recognize them. But, I do think this could be a model. And I think what we heard in the comments, I guess in the fall, was people weren't denying that we needed to make some decisions, but they were just saying they didn't want us to make it by ourselves. And, you know, okay, that sounds right. Give you that. So, I think it is, it is something that we want to take forward from here. And so, just want to extend my appreciation to you and your other partners and to you, Angela, for listening. So, it's a better way forward. With that, I'd ask Commissioner Cannon for a motion.
I move that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Seconded by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor? Commissioner McFadden, Bondima, Cannon, Kashani, Frank, Berkeley, Richardson, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
And thank you to the team for your great work on this, as usual.
I'd now like to, the reason we pulled Hogan and Lovells is we want to take a public vote on that. There's no need for, there's no questions on it. We just want to vote in public.
So, can I have a motion to approve procurement item 1601 to Hogan Lovells LLP? Seriously, somebody move it. Commissioner Berkeley, can I have a second? Commissioner Bondima, second. All in favor? Commissioner McFadden, Bondima, Cannon, Kashani, Frank, Berkeley? Any opposed? Any recusals? Motion passes six, four, zero against, and one recusal. That completes our consent agenda. We have, under the information discussion, we already had the single audit presentation. So, I'd like to invite staff who are going to present on the kindergarten readiness assessment results.
Good evening. My name is Shane Hall. I'm a Director of Research.
Hello, Crystal Francis, Director of Early Learning Programs.
Good evening, Janice Lane, ED of Teaching and Learning.
This evening, we will present the results of the kindergarten readiness assessment for fall of 2017. And to start, we'd just like to give you a little background on the assessment itself, which I will turn over to Crystal and Janice.
The kindergarten readiness assessment was first administered in the 2014-2015 school year. This is our fourth year of implementation. The assessment window begins on September 5th, and this year closes on October 20th. Baltimore City is one of the few districts that still does census administration of the assessment. We do that because we want to use this as a beginning-of-the-year tool to look at the levels for all of our students. On this next slide, you'll see the domain areas in which it will be measured our readiness. So, we have language and literacy, math, social foundations, and physical well-being and motor development. We get a composite score, which shows you students that are demonstrating readiness, approaching or emerging. Once you break it out into the separate domains, the scores are either demonstrating or not demonstrating.
Let me just briefly walk you through the executive summary. The good news about our KRA results is that we have shown improvement over the prior year. This year, 40.9% of our students demonstrated kindergarten readiness in the composite, up from 38% a year ago. That is a significant increase. By comparison, the state readiness rate improved from 43% to 45%. So, we actually narrowed the readiness gap with the state to within five points. Among students who attended city schools pre-K programs, the news is even greater. They had a kindergarten readiness rate of nearly 46%, which is greater than the state readiness rate for students who had attended public pre-kindergarten statewide. Across the four domains of the kindergarten readiness assessment, city schools demonstrated higher rates of readiness in three of the four domains, with only math showing a slight decrease. Here, you see composite KRA results for city schools and for the state. By comparison, as you can see from the bar chart on the right for demonstrating readiness, our rate is within five points of the state's readiness rate. Here, we have a comparison of our readiness rates with those of the state's largest LEAs. And in the appendix, there is a slide for every LEA in the state. And I'll apologize for a small typo. Ours should be 40.9, not 41.9. Here, again, I want to illustrate the theme of closing readiness gaps. As you can see, for 2016-17, a readiness gap of about five percentage points. And with our improvement over the past year, we have narrowed that to nearly four points. So, improvements in increasing kindergarten readiness. Here, we want to highlight the success of our city schools' pre-kindergarten programs. Here, with this, on the left side, you see the readiness rate overall between city schools and the state. While on the right, you see the rates for students who attended pre-kindergarten programs. As you can see, students who attended city schools' pre-kindergarten programs actually demonstrated kindergarten readiness at a higher rate than students who attended public pre-K statewide. And I want to say, this is for both our regular pre-kindergarten programs and those with Judy centers. All right, here you see the readiness rates. And again, for the domain levels, its score is either demonstrating readiness or not demonstrating. And as you can see, across the four domains, the comparison of city schools' readiness rates and the state's readiness rates, the greatest gap, as you will see, is in math. And on the social foundations and physical development domains, our readiness rates and the states are nearly even. Here, you see year-to-year changes and year-to-year improvement in kindergarten readiness at the composite level by race and ethnicity. You can see here that all three of city schools' largest racial and ethnic groups showed higher rates of readiness from a year ago. Increases were statistically significant among our white and Hispanic-Latino populations. All three groups showed improvements. Here, we see a comparison of readiness rates among, by gender, English learner status, and students with disabilities. And as you can see, we do have readiness gaps between boys and girls, between English learners and non-English learners, and students with disabilities, and non-students without disabilities. One thing we're often interested in is students' predominant prior care setting, their predominant setting the year prior to kindergarten. And what you'll see here is that 65% in this pie chart attended pre-kindergarten the previous year, either in city schools or in another public pre-K. 60% attended city schools' pre-K, including those with Judy centers. And on this chart, you see the readiness of kindergarten students by that predominant care setting. And the blue bars actually show the readiness rates. And as you can see from those two bars on the left, students in city schools' pre-K and in Judy centers showed the greatest levels of kindergarten readiness, greater than most other prior care settings, with the exception of the non-public nursery school, where a small number of students attended. This is an adjusted odds ratio. It's based on a statistical analysis that tries to measure the likelihood of being kindergarten-ready by prior care setting with controls for demographic factors such as race and ethnicity, English learner status, and income. And as you can see here, pre-kindergarten, and especially pre-kindergarten with Judy centers, showed the greatest likelihood of being kindergarten-ready, along with non-public nursery school. The other settings, we found, were significantly less likely to demonstrate kindergarten readiness. Once again, underscoring the benefits of pre-kindergarten.
I just have to say, I was bad at statistics in college. So, when I saw this slide, I was like, they're showing off now. This was a very helpful slide, but I was like, I don't think I could have created. This was a very helpful slide, but I was like, I don't think I could have created this.
So some next steps that we've identified were pre-K enrollment strategies. As you saw on the previous slide, there's about sixty-five percent of students who do attend our city schools pre-K. So we are working with Office of Communication, Family Engagement, to see if we can increase that number moving forward for the eighteen-nineteen school year. We have also reached out to, and are going to partner with Ready at Five, who does a lot of early childhood professional development here in Baltimore, to do a math symposium, math institute with our pre-K and K teachers at the beginning of the school year, as we're getting ready to go back to school. And then we are also continuing to increase collaboration between our pre-K and K teachers, having them both sit down with the data in order to see how students are kind of scoring what skills, which areas and standards we need to focus on in kindergarten, and letting that inform what instruction looks like in pre-K.
Commissioner Frank? And then Commissioner Canham?
You did a great job of showing what might be some of the reasons for our kids being ready, either, I guess, demonstrating or approaching by being in our programs, or JUDY centers, or other things. I'm curious, how predictive is the kindergarten assessment of future academic outcomes? And do we learn anything in the process to then provide supports to kids after we learn of their assessment? And do we follow them on to see how helpful this assessment is in determining where they're going?
Great question. Janice Lane is sitting here with me from Teaching and Learning. This is something that we're constantly looking at. One thing that we know is, once we have students that get into kindergarten, because there are a number of students who haven't come from pre-K or from any other prior care settings, we do understand that in kindergarten, we have to do a lot of differentiation once students get there, because we do have a number of students who have come from city schools pre-K, and then a number of students who haven't. So we're finding that, once we get into kindergarten, we have to start doing a lot of that intense work at that point. And then after that, we are, in the Office of Early Learning, really trying to partner and pair with the rest of our colleagues in Teaching and Learning, to really make sure that our content is strong in kindergarten for when students make the transition from kindergarten into first grade.
And I would just add to that, that this is, and Crystal, correct me if I'm wrong, the second year, this is only the second year that the assessment hasn't changed. In previous years, there's been major differences within, so we couldn't compare across. This is the second administration that has remained consistent.
Yes, this wasn't one of the first opportunities we had to look at, compare KRA results from year to year.
So that was your follow-up? Okay, great. Commissioner Frank, you're Commissioner Frank. Commissioner Canham?
Gosh, maybe that could be Commissioner Frank.
I'm really, yeah, probably.
One day. I just want to just acknowledge that, you know, as part of the Teaching and Learning Committee, we've looked at this data for years. And actually, it's with this leadership and this board, that this investment in pre-K, we've seen it not only pay off, but improve over time. And so when breaking, it was these really helpful slides, looking at the JUDY centers, and also then our pre-K programs, because we've gone through some real fiscal challenges. And as a non-negotiable, from leadership in this board, has been where we invest over thirty million dollars into our pre-K. And that, to me, has been one of the most promising signs that we can look at when we look at the data. And obviously, then, the question is, how do we build upon that? But I just want to just give ourselves a little pat on the back. Not only is the investment there, we're improving over time, and just commend the team for the commitment. My question is slots. So of course, I see sixty-five percent of our students are in one of our pre-K programs or JUDY centers. Then I'm like, I want more. I want more students attending, because it's going to help set them up. Are there any empty slots? And what can we do to fill them? And then, yeah, yeah, within our pre-K programs and the JUDY centers in particular. And then I have other questions about how much it's going to, like, cost if we wanted to get a hundred percent, but that doesn't have to be discussed now. It's more like, do we have open slots that we can't fill?
Yes, we do. So one of the things that we have noticed, city schools has a ton of pre-K classrooms, which is wonderful. We do still have open seats. One of the things that I'm proposing to do this year is to move a few classrooms that are really under-enrolled, and try to move them into neighborhoods and communities where we know that there are a lot of four-year-olds. So I've worked with Burke, been working with the Facilities Office here, to really try to find where in the city these four-year-olds live, and then try to figure out if there is space in these schools in order to move those classrooms. So this year, we're proposing, and I'm sure you'll hear about this later, to move a couple of classrooms, so that we can try to increase those seats. And so seeing if that is going to be something that works. We're also working with, like I said before, Communications. Port Discovery has a countdown in kindergarten event that they have every single year. I've asked them to try to revamp that into a leap-up to pre-K event or something. It really is about getting the word out, and getting the word out early. What I've found is, when you start trying to recruit for pre-K students when they're four years old.
It's too late.
It's too late. So we're really trying to figure out how we can make the connection with these families when their children are between zero to three, to get them connected to city schools, so that they automatically know that as soon as my child turns four years old, like, I'm going right down to my neighborhood school.
So I love the fact that you're testing and moving classrooms, but do you have a sense of the number of slots that are left unfilled? And if not, you can, I just want to know. I mean, get it back.
Citywide, it's probably about three hundred.
Three hundred.
Yes, yeah.
Wow.
That we have funding for, we have funding set aside, but that just we're not filling. Okay.
We can get you the actual numbers.
And if we did that three hundred, it would probably be, okay, I'm just trying to get the, then my follow-up question, maybe it's for Mr. Conley at some point, is to say, what would it be if we funded one hundred percent? Like, I know the cost is exorbitant, and I'm not saying that we would come up with that cost, but I think always in the front of our mind, it should be, how can we get a hundred percent funding for pre-K slots for all of our kids? And that's a Kerwin ask, it's a state ask, it should be front and center of our mind of how much it costs.
Yeah, and just building on that, I just want to say that it is a Kerwin ask, and that specifically, the ask is, so we got seventy-five percent of our base amount of funding this year, and next year we get a hundred percent. That was part of the three-year agreement of last year for the funding gap, that helps. But part of the Kerwin ask is specifically, is that the base amount does not cover the cost of pre-K. So it should not just be the base amount that we should get, it should also be any of the weights that our students qualify for. So if they're a student who's in poverty, if they're, so I guess that would count, but if there's a student who has special needs, that there should be, the weight should be tied to it, too. Because right now, the amount that we're getting, the base amount, is not covering the cost of this. So we are still, even a hundred percent, we're subsidizing it, and so it should be covered for all of our students, because this is where you really get to see the difference of when you're providing the support to students, the impact it's making.
I have more of a comment than a question, following up on Commissioner Canham. There's very few things in social, you know, around social issues, including education, where you see such a clear return on investment. This is really a banner. And I think Commissioner Frank's question about predictive, to me, is like the billboard for why we have the blueprint. We need to do even more when our children are in their early years, to make sure that they get through those early years with the ability to read. That's not all they need, but the whole child work tries to help to assure that we do that, because I think that our ability to follow through and implement the blueprint, I think, would be the best way for us to realize the return on this investment after the kids move past pre-K. But given these kinds of returns, we do need more money, but there's no way we're going to walk away from this investment, there just is no way. It's just too, it's just too much return. Commissioner McFadden?
I know that the largest area for growth is in mathematics, so I'm assuming that's why the slide fifteen is talking about that, professional development. Are there other professional development opportunities or ideas that we're thinking about in these next steps and priorities for our staff?
Definitely. We are also, this year, we moved to the Eureka Math Curriculum in alignment with the rest of the grades, so they're also doing that in pre-K and K. So we're also going to reach out to them to see if they also provide professional development training for our teachers. So we have gotten some grants from the state for Ready for Kindergarten, so we're trying to see if we can use those grant dollars to pay for some more professional development for our teachers.
And Crystal, can you talk a little bit about the additional professional development that happens during systemic? I think that's what broader than just this. What else are we doing?
So this year, we also started doing differentiated sessions for our teachers during our professional development. So we kind of have, again, we're kind of testing this out, so we're not quite, like, tracked yet. But we have done sessions on literacy, on writing, on math, trying to tie in all of the work that's coming from the blueprint, from the 2020 academic goal, so that we make sure that we're imparting that for our youngest learners as well. So they have had sessions that are based specifically on math, and then we also wanted to look at implementation of the assessment as well.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Senthelis, do you want to add?
No, I just wanted to give big kudos to Crystal, her early work, no pun intended, but her early work and the role has been outstanding. I remember my first interview with her for thirty minutes, after she'd been selected by the Chief Academic Officer, and the Head of Teaching and Learning. But she really has a sense, I think she brings a real view of how we can prepare our young people while still being developmentally enriching. So I want to commend you for your work. And also, just say, just to reiterate again, that we know that the gap is not young people, because we have invested to, you know, the tune of what everyone has said, we've invested, we've committed. Our young people are coming to kindergarten-ready. But what we are seeing, and also to Commissioner McFadden's point, is that we need better support for teachers around what to do with a pre-K student who is coming to kindergarten, in some cases already reading. And that kindergartener should not, I mean, that pre-K to kindergartener should not be spending four months going over letters in kindergarten. So that requires skill, that requires curriculum, it's part of the curriculum assessment that we're doing. We have some early learning folks that are part of that. But it all builds into the work, and so that even though the blueprint says grades three through five, six, and nine, we know that that does not do away with what needs to happen in early literacy. So this point about teacher capacity and our support of teachers in that is key. And it's, and Janice and I had a conversation about it today, the number of kindergarten teachers who, not knowing what to do, almost repeat half the year of pre-K for kids that come in ready to do more. So we know that that's work we have to do, and work that we're looking forward to reporting to the board more fully about. Thank you.
Anything else? Great, thanks.
Thanks a lot, nice job.
So next, our presentation on our summer plan.
You'll get tired of hearing from me eventually.
And we appreciate your work, too, Shane.
Oh, I know you're, I know you're the one doing the statistics. I know this.
I didn't mean to.
I know this.
I just knew you were staying at the table.
Hello, Laura Hanian, Director of Differentiated Learning.
Rhonda Welsh, Coordinator of Extended Learning.
Shane Hall, Director of Research.
We're here to provide the 2018 summer plan. If you would like additional information, we also had presented in January to Teaching and Learning Committee a much more extensive presentation. Those slides are in the appendix, so if you have questions, feel free to look there or ask as we're going through. Our support for summer learning is aligned to the blueprint, and the unique opportunities in the summer is that we provide school-based staff leadership opportunities that they might not have to be site coordinators, and we help build their capacity through professional development. We focus on literacy and support the students, and we have supports for the continuum of learners, including some social emotional supports in all of our programs. The goals of summer learning are to limit summer learning loss, increase promotion and graduation, provide opportunities to engage our students in a safe environment. This is actually really interesting, given the conversation we just had around students coming to us ready. We know the research suggests that students that are low-income, that that gap increases in the summer. The summer, you know, the research is clear, the two equalizers are pre-K and summer, right? That's the time where you see, and so as you look at the research, you'll see that, and I think, I'm just going to read the one part, "Out of the school learning during the elementary years distinguishes those who fall off the path to high school completion and those who will go to a four-year college." And so it's really, the summer is a critical time for that. And we are part of a larger summer plan, so we work every, every month, we collaborate with funders, partners, the Parks and Rec, the Mayor's Office, to think about summer, the summer plan for all of Baltimore City. So as you can see, we're just a small part of a larger plan, and we'll dig into those, that part, but like I said, there is a number of opportunities, and some of our kids take an opportunity in more than one site. So they'll come to our program, but they'll also take part in some of the funding collaborative opportunities. We also provide a number of meals in the summer, not just at our summer sites, and there was a ten percent increase from last year. In 2017, we made some major changes that I think are worth noting. We provided aftercare at our elementary sites, we saw a major increase in attendance as a result. We offered pre-K seats at two of our elementary programs. We conducted qualitative observations and feedback sessions, and we consolidated to two high school sites, you'll see we're reconsidering that, and we offered additional options for the continuum of learners. Here is a list of our 2017 programs, and Shane is going to discuss the evaluation. And again, there's a lot more detail around the evaluation in the appendix.
Okay, here I'm going to give you the high altitude, the thirty-thousand-foot view of the evaluation, but to reiterate what Laura said, the slides we presented to you at the Teaching and Learning Committee in January are in the appendix, and they're there for you to explore as you wish. Overall, the Title I Summer Program, students in there generally demonstrated less learning loss than their peers with no identified summer intervention, as measured by I-Ready scores between spring, prior to summer, and this past fall, following summers, summer school opportunities. This was especially true in grades three through five reading and K-2 math. Our middle grades promotion program, students showed improved attendance compared to summer 2016, but lower rates of promotion. Now, I will say that, as far as implementing the summer middle grades promotion program, there was a real effort to prioritize those students who were most at, most in need of this support, who were most at risk of retention. And one consequence of that was there were some lower rates of retention compared to earlier years. Middle school STEM students, they demonstrated some slight growth in I-Ready math scores between spring and fall 2017. That was, in general, a higher-performing group than their peers. They indicated that the program challenged them academically. High school credit recovery programs showed more students participating, but lower attendance and credit recovery rates compared to summer 2016. While the reduction in sites for 2017 was considered a factor, I should point out that the actual summer attendance was fairly consistent with regular school-year attendance rates among high school students. And then finally, we looked at the AP Summer Academy, designed to prepare students for enrolling and, we hope, succeeding in AP courses, and we found that more than seventy-five percent of this past summer's AP Summer Academy participants had enrolled in one or more AP courses in fall of 2017. In past presentations of summer learning results, some commissioners expressed a wish for those evaluations to capture more student voice. Well, we've heard your feedback on that, and this is something we did new for the 2017 evaluation, to try to capture more student voice.
I was thrilled with this slide.
Thank you.
I think it really does matter that we ask the kids what they thought of something that we did for them.
Enormous credit to our School Effectiveness Review, or SER, team in helping us plan this. We utilized their classroom observation tool. We observed sixty-six classrooms in five summer programs. We looked at the Title I Elementary Program, Middle Grades Promotion, Middle School STEM, High School Credit Recovery, and the AP Summer Academy. We observed classrooms in all of those programs. In addition, we conducted nine student-focus groups, we conducted twelve teacher-focus groups. We conducted 12 teacher focus groups. And there on the right, you'll see some of the most and least observed instructional behaviors based on the classroom observations. And in this next slide, you'll see just some, just some quote, a few quotations that speak to some themes we identified from the focus groups. Students, for the most part, reported an enjoyable summer learning experience overall. There were some mixed perspectives on the academic rigor of summer program, programming. Some thought it was very heavy on review rather than new material, but others felt like that material was valuable in preparing them, that maybe they felt a little underprepared during the school year and that this summer gave some reinforcement to better prepare them for what we hope would be future academic success. And then finally, from the teacher focus groups, they indicated that they felt supported and that they received feedback.
Okay, now we're going to get into our summer offerings for summer 2018. We're going to begin with our elementary summer learning program. This year, we're going with young audiences as the provider. They'll be at eight sites, and we hope to serve over around 2,200 students this summer. We also want to take note that, in keeping with pre-K that we started last year at two sites, we did a pilot program. This year, we're going to expand on that and increase the number of students we, we enroll in pre-K at these sites.
In our focus groups with students in the Young Audiences Program, they indicated that they enjoyed it and they looked forward to coming each day, and that was largely because of the arts component integrated into, into the program. They said they wanted a chance to work on their, their painting, or drawing, or, you know, whatever artistic endeavor was a part of their summer instruction.
The, the next program we're going to talk about is a new partnership for summer 2018. We're partnering with the Weinberg Foundation, and we're going to be heading up the 2018 Summer Reads Program. The program is going to be held at seven sites in the Weinberg libraries. It'll be a drop-in program focused on literacy. The benefit to us is that it doesn't cost us anything, but we provide the sites, we provide the communication and the outreach to schools and families, and then we help support them with the data that follows. The next program is the Middle Grades Promotion. Again, will be at two sites this year. We're using Bell as the vendor for this program. We intend to have approximately 400 students, and our focus this year is going to be on promoting more students, working to see how we can meet the needs of all those kids and get them promoted to the next grade. We're going to continue with the Engineers of the Future Program. This will be held at Waverly. It'll be six weeks instead of our regular five-week programming for all of our other program sites. And this will serve approximately 240 students.
Our focus group with students in this program, they said they really found it challenging to them academically.
Have a question on this slide, Commissioner Bondima.
Right, thank you. Who will be teaching these students engineering program? And also, what, will it be robotics, or what type of curriculum will you have for this?
The program is focused on advanced math. They're trying to make certain that these students are college-ready. So the goal is, by the time the students reach eighth grade, or going into their eighth grade year, they'll be able to take Algebra I.
Okay.
And these students, those who qualify and meet that requirement, will be taking Algebra I virtually, because these are students who are, are in schools that do not offer Algebra I for eighth graders. So they're offering that as an option.
And there's a lot of research suggesting that a successful completion of Algebra I in eighth grade is strongly predictive of being college-ready.
So, I do see, no, I'm sorry, it's a full-day program, and is it divided up into block scheduling from what, you know, from, you know, different, in addition to math, you have other courses that you're serving in the program, like reading, writing?
So I, I will just say, when, when I walked through Waverly last summer, just based on what I saw, it, it is a combination of different things, but it's, it's centered around the mathematics and the application with different kinds of engineering projects. So you can, yeah, so it's, it's applied math as well as just math support.
Yeah, I was going to say, the students who select to go to this program have a strong interest in this rigorous math program.
I have a recommendation that won't cost you a dime. I would, I would recommend that you contact the universities, anyone, especially Morgan Engineering Department. They are, they have students during the summer who are doing work-study, and there would be, they could, you include that into your program, and they would be happy to come by and, and maybe come in one day, or whatever time you work it in. And even Towson, all those schools that have engineering programs and UMBC, they, they have programs that they send their students out to work at school, and it wouldn't cost anything for us to, to bring them in.
That's a great, that is a really great idea.
Be a lot of fun for the college students, and it's another great way, because you, these are kids you're trying to prepare for college, it's another great way to introduce them and interact with college students. And it's summer, it's a little, a little less tight than a school year, it's.
I also have another recommendation. You know the program that Baltimore City have for students workforce initiatives? And they do have money. Those students, they find jobs for students, but in addition to that, students can work in a school setting. They can work anywhere where they can be supervised, the high school kids, maybe a student from a city poly, whatever, Dunbar, you can invite them in as mentors for the kids, and they will get paid through the city. And they're taking applications. I don't know when the, I know students are applying for it, but they have like, what, two, three, four thousand, a thousand job availability, so you should check that out. There's so many opportunities to get service, you know, reliable service during the summer with high school kids and college kids.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great recommendation. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. As happy as I was about the slide about the focus groups with students, the thing that caught my eye on this slide was, how many schools do we have with grades six to eight that do not teach Algebra I? Like, how is that even allowed?
So I think that's part of, when Dr. Senthelis mentioned, we're in a middle school work group, we're, we're looking at that very carefully. I'm one of the members of that work group, and we're looking at that. All of the gifted advanced learning sites have Algebra I, and it's expanded. This is part of trying to improve that expansion, is helping students be ready for that virtual algebra opportunity and making sure they have those skills so that they're successful. I can, I have to get you the exact number, I don't have.
No, it's okay. It's, it's, it's almost a rhetorical question, because even if there's one, there's two, that's too many.
I agree.
We know, it's a gateway, it's, it's the gateway subject, it's the predictor subject, it's, so if we have a school without an algebra class, we're essentially saying to the kids and the parents, a lot. It's, it's saying a lot. So I, I, it's not even a question, it's just like, I'm glad there's a work group, so figure it out.
No, and, and I think to your point, you know, part of the challenge, and I think the, you know, you know, Laura and her team have, have been doing yeoman's work lifting that, but there also has been some debate around kind of where algebra in the middle grades falls within Park and Common Core. I think one of the things that we, or that I at least, since arriving, have been fairly consistent about, and I have talked to some of the people who wrote Common Core, and we just agree to disagree on this, I think that you have to, to your point, Commissioner, have wide access to algebra in middle grades, and that has not changed. It has not changed politically in terms of the trajectory of mathematics study. It has changed in, in certain settings, but, you know, it is, it is one of those things that we are now giving attention to. And, and to your point, ideally should be available in every middle school. Every middle school should have young people who are ready for algebra in eighth grade. And that's just kind of the it statement, that's what it should be. But it does get into, you know, the questions that have kind of surfaced all night around what does equality in middle grades look like? And, you know, some of the discussions that we've started having with the Penderhughes and Gilmore community, right, is when you have a small K through eight, I went to visit MLK last week, and they have one class per grade level. One class of sixth graders, one class of seventh graders, one class of eighth graders. And so to schedule for that becomes a lot more challenging in the midst of other stuff that's going on. But, but I say all of that to say, when we talk about robust middle grades programming, this is just one slice of that, but ideally, the target should be that in every middle school within the district, there is the opportunity to take algebra as an eighth grader. And it should not be that you have to be a gal site to be that. Like you, that, that just, there are some schools for which that is the given, that yep, that the 90% of young people take algebra in eighth grade. And so for us to not have any in certain schools be able to do that is problematic.
Or every school's a gal site.
I'm sorry.
Or every school's a gal site.
Sure.
That's our goal.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay.
I thought, I thought I had a question over here. Did I miss?
I just want to also point out one thing about the program, if it's helpful. When you looked at the data, this was the one program that didn't just mitigate summer learning loss, but they saw gains in the students. So that's, that's a difference than, and I just wanted to make a note of that.
Great. Commissioner McFadden?
Why is it just one site at Waverly Elementary Middle School for this particular program?
I, I think for any of these programs, we would love to expand more. I mean, I think it's, there's a resource question, and I think that's a question the CIO is looking at me, like, we, we always want more of these types of programs. It becomes a question of the budget, how many, how much we have and what we have to offer. I mean, I think it would be great to have more. That's, that's all I could say.
I'm just thinking of equity and how we are reaching students who perhaps may be in Cherry Hill or the west side of our city. This school, Waverly, is northeast Baltimore, kind of, central, northeast, you know? So how are we looking at, you know, dispersing this type of program throughout our system so it reaches, you know, it reaches a more diverse group of, of, of young people?
I think looking at where programs are is very important. We picked Waverly because it was close to being centrally located and close to public transit, and had opportunities, but you're 100% right, right? It is slightly northeast. And so, and so we'll go back and look at our student survey results, because we did have kids from all over coming, and we'll see, and, you know, we'll continue to see as resources become available, we can expand these types of programs, but it's really, it's about the resources. And we can look again to see if there's a more centrally located place. It's a little tough to find the perfect summer spots, because there's, you know, certain limitations. There has to be, you know, air conditioning, there has to be access to public transit. It's just, it can be a little more challenging than it just, it sounds than just looking at a map. So we, we've been looking at that, but that's what I could say.
Thank you. I just think we should take a look even more further into that to make sure that we are really looking to service as many students throughout our entire city as we possibly can. That really makes me think about someone that perhaps lives in Cherry Hill, or, you know, Liberty Hot, like, on the other side, going across, that might be a bit of a challenge. And if we want to make sure we're maximizing their instructional growth, we want to make sure we make it a bit more accessible for them to do that.
Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, he just hit a, a hotspot for me, because I'm a Cherry Hill girl, okay? And you can't get a better location to have access to transportation, because all of the kids live in Cherry Hill, and they all walk back and forth to the same school, to schools in the area. And so I, I also recommend that it's a great opportunity to put a program such as this program or other programs out there. You have no, you know, it would be no reason why a student could not get there. Because like I just said, they walk back and forth in Cherry Hill, it's so confined. So I would like to see that happen. If it does, I'd like to hear about it.
Okay, that's, and, and I think that is a really great point, and that is part of why we're part of the summer planning collaborative as well, because we help, we look at our offerings, and then we start thinking about all the other types of offerings, and there are other focused offerings. So when we go back to the table, we'll make sure that we're talking to them about, and we look at all the neighborhoods, and we say, we have these offerings here, but where do we have empty areas? Where can we put more programs? And so it's all about trying to be as strategic as possible to make sure that we have programs all over the city. But that is some great feedback that we will take back.
So two things for me. I think, I appreciate that you put that in context, because it is important for us to remember that there's been some great work done by this staff in collaboration with the city, the Youth Works Program, some of the foundation-funded programs, to try to get a widespread. So we have budget limitations, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other programs. So I, I think, but Cherry Hill's a good point, because that part of the city can tend to be isolated because of the nature, the geography. And this is a question I ask every year. I know you're going to get to the budget page, but we know we have to do, we know we have to figure out the summer stuff now because of the need to plan. But we're not voting on this tonight, we're just getting the presentation. Is it so, so are we, when do you need us to approve, like, a budget for the summer? Do you need that before we go through the full budget process, or is that process, is that budget timeline work for you? I, I do, I really do get confused, because some of these questions, when the answer to some of these questions is that if we had more money, we would, we would expand them, you know, with the amount of money that we have, when you take money away from, if you add money to the summer program, you're taking it away from the school year program. So it's not like we can just say, let's double the program, because it's a, we don't have increasing budgets. But then that did raise for me the timing of the presentation, which is informative with all the evaluation information, but then I don't know when we have to decide things.
Sure. Laura Jones, Manager for Teaching and Learning. So every year, there is this challenge where we, we want to present this information as early as possible, but also, there's obviously the budget implications. This is really the first big activity that the district does in the new fiscal year. In the past, what we've done is we've made some adjustments to programming as needed based on budget realities. So right now, this is based on our best understanding of what the FY19 budget will look like and what we think we'll have available within our district office budget, and what we know we currently have committed via grants. In the case where some of that has to change, money is tighter than we anticipated, or in a really great scenario where there's a windfall of cash and we get to expand, we would make those adjustments. There hasn't been a formal approval of summer learning programming. But this would reflect what you would see in the district office budget as far as summer learning allocations.
But there, there will still be room then in the overall budget discussions to kind of re-ask these kinds of questions. I'm not just asking it for Commissioner McFadden's benefit as a new board member, but I'm just to remind myself. So there is room in the budget discussions to re-raise this, since we're not voting on this tonight, but unless there is additional cash, if I'm understanding you, an increase, it's a fixed pot, you go up one, you go down one. And so I think that it would be useful as a follow-up, to the extent that you have it, because you might not. I know in other times during this summer presentation, there have been representatives from the summer funding collaborative, from our partners at Weinberg and Casey and others, to the extent that you have information about the distribution of some other programs, I, I'm not asking you to answer it now, because it's a lot of detail, but it, I think it might be helpful, because that is part of the picture.
I agree. Their, their applications are out now, and they're going through a review process.
So they don't have it.
No, they don't have it right now.
That's right.
But we are part of the team. We have teachers who are reviewing applications as part of the review process. They're expanding the review process. So they're in the midst of a review process. I don't know for certain, but I would bet we wouldn't have that till about March.
That's fine. When you have it, I, you're.
I think April, yeah, I don't get.
I think it's just useful for the board, because like I said, we'll be in the budget process. I think that it does matter. If we can't expand, I think it's important information for the board to have that, where other programs are, because we have dramatically improved the way this, we, how strategic we are with the money, which I think is the point Commissioner McCann was making.
Oh, well, I think this is just a point that we've gotten smarter, like, and gotten better as a district. And what we learned is, you know, on teaching and learning, as we. And what we learned is, you know, on Teaching and Learning, as we asked these questions, where we kind of were, one of the biggest challenges was attendance, our kids showing up. And what we realized, and the team has done an incredible job driving this, is that we were recruiting and approving things way too late to then communicate out, and we were doing a lot of district-run programs. What they've done now is, it's just a ton more strategic. We've got great partners in Young Audiences and Bell, who, and we've onboarded them earlier. We've given the directional approval, knowing that the 2019 budget is coming. And it's mostly Title I funds that are funding a lot of this, so that's more consistent. And so, then, they've just done some great planning and then, to kind of, then get the word out and recruit students, attendance has gone up. I just, I'm just kind of, this is another one, it's kind of like a happy day with KRA and summer learning. Like, we, we are making progress and improvement here, because of the leadership here. Yeah, so I just want to give you kudos, but then, to say that that's how the, but for us as a board, it's very important that we, it's, yes, we can make fine tuning, but the recruitment of students and getting the partners in place to onboard them is, they've shared with us how important that is, the earlier the possible, so they can get the students and the teachers, too. And we've done a much better job with that.
So, I think we kind of jumped your presentation, so we'll let you finish the presentation. I think some of these questions are relevant to all of the programs you're going to discuss, so we, we apologize. Or actually, not really.
You started, I was waiting.
We don't really apologize for this.
Okay, the next program is our high school summer program. This is a program, again, where high school students can both recover credit and can also take courses for original credit. Last year, again, we had our highest number of students ever, with over seventeen hundred students at two sites. We've learned from that, and now we're going to have them at three sites. We feel like the culture and climate was impacted, we feel that had an impact on attendance and so on, so we are going to go back to the three sites, and we feel like that will help with our data and student satisfaction.
We're also, this year, going to do a late site. So, we're going to try out, just based on some of the feedback from students. So, we're going to have one site that starts midday and goes to later. We always had a later session, so that students who want to participate in Youth Works can also take a summer class at the end of the day. And so, we are going to have one of the sites start later.
Our next program is the English Learner Summer Program. We intend to try and increase the number of students. Our goal is a hundred, but we're partnering with the Refugee Youth Project. I think Laura can talk about that a little more, I think she's chomping at the bit.
Yeah, this is like, you know, when I talk about English learners, I get very excited. So, we are going to be working with the Refugee Youth Project to partner, so the site is together, so our refugee youth and our students with interrupted schooling, so those refugee youth who are also getting Youth Works can choose to take a class, one of our sheltered content classes. One of the struggles we had, in full transparency, with the English Learner Program was attendance. And so, we're going to continue to work with that. But we are targeting our hardest-to-reach English learners. These are students with interrupted formal schooling. They have major gaps.
Again, these are students with.
Interrupted formal schooling. So, they come to us with major gaps in their educational programming, sometimes sixteen, seventeen, the first time they've entered schools, or they've only had a couple of years of schooling. So, we are working really hard to get them to come every day. It's hard, to be really honest, because there are work opportunities for them, there are other opportunities in the summer, so it can be a challenge to compete with those.
We're going to continue with our Advanced Placement Summer Academy. Again, we're looking to increase the numbers. We've brought back folks within our Gifted and Talented Office, who are recruiting, as we speak, both students and teachers. The application is up for students, and so far, my understanding is we already have ninety students who are enrolled in the program or who have, have filled out an application. So, our goal this year is to increase that number and to continue our partnership with Youth Works. Again, extended school year service, this is mandated, so it's, it's going to continue on for all students, whose IEP's mandate that they have extended school year. We also have the continuation of a couple CTE programs, the BACH Fellows and the JROTC programs through the College and Career Readiness Office. And then, we just have our Youth Works slide up here, because we know that we're kind of a big partner. It's the majority of our kids who are filling those slots for summer, and many of our schools have students who are working in schools and partnering with schools to offer them jobs for the summer. Here is our summer 2018 program budget.
And just to follow up on the Youth Works, our students in our AP program are actually getting Youth Works, so they're enrolled in Youth Works as part of the AP program, so we're working on those job skills as well.
And that's reinstituted this year, correct?
That's right.
Great.
So, if you look at the general, general funds and grant budget implications, there's not too much of a change from previous year. If you take slides side by side, you're going to find pretty much the same amount as being Any comments or questions?
Commissioner McFadden? No, it's fine.
Did we rely on those programs to do recruitment? The Bell, Young Audience, did we rely on them to recruit? Or did we, I'm asking?
That's a great question. We partner. So, they do a lot of really great recruitment. So, Bell and Young Audiences already work in a lot of our schools with families during the school year, but we partner with them. We also are working with the Summer Planning Collaborative to think about how we're sort of advertising all the summer offerings this year. And we have our website, so we help promote it. They hire our teachers in their programs, and so, it's really a partnership, but that is part of the expectation as the partner, that they're also going to work on that.
Just to, just to jump in here, is, because I've visited the Young Audiences site this summer, and I asked the question, because they, the biggest challenge is attendance, and both programs have seen a pretty good bump in attendance. And visiting, they, they were very clear on every student, the number of times, it wasn't rocket science, but having a partner there, it was responsible, and us pushing, meaning Teaching and Learning, the team, everybody, especially, we want attendance to go up, I think has really made a difference. There's, they're, they're just, the phone calls, the outreach, they're, they showed me cards that they had to kind of track every student and how they're, and how many contacts they had to make sure that they showed up. So, I think they're really owning the attendance piece and recruitment.
Anything else? Thanks a lot.
I would just, I'm sorry, I would just say, as a parent, I hadn't known about a lot of this. And so, I know you were relying on your partners to help you recruit, but these are some really great summer programs, and so I don't know how we can get this in the hands of principals and PTOs and PTA's, so that, you know, more, more families can just know what's going on.
And we really do reach out to families, both, last year, both Bell and Young Audiences made up flyers, took them, we delivered them, like, inter-office mail to all of the schools, like packets of flyers to be backpacked home to families, you know, through the kids. And again, the website, social media, we work with communications, and they put it, they blast it everywhere. But you're right, we do need to do a better job of making certain that families, parents are aware of it.
Do all schools get the outreach, charters and traditional?
Yes, because it's Title I. Any, any Title I student can attend that, the pre-K to five grade program.
I was just curious.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Dr. Santilli, I'm not sure. But do schools have, do we know the, the schools that offer summer programs? Are there any schools that offer them outside of this?
There used to be, I don't know, sorry. There used to be. Are there now still individual schools that offer summer programs?
Oh, absolutely. I think many of, when you see the slide and you see the data on the Summer Funding Collaborative, many of those are school-based programs or in rec centers right next to schools. But many of those partner programs are actually in school communities, which is why I had brought that up when you said, some of them are, in some, in some cases, in some communities, a school-based program is what makes sense, rather than a systemic program. And what we have to get better at is thinking about that, knowing our communities and being able to make that decision. And it's not an easy one, but that's why we have the Summer Planning Team that comes together and thinks about it. But once we have that information, it sounds like everybody's interested in it, we'll make sure that's available. Once we know where the, the planning sites have been established. But again, right now is the application process.
Yeah, I think it tells the whole story.
Right. Yeah, which is why we started with that slide that said we're eighteen percent of a larger.
Yep. That's good.
One last thing I would just say for the public, that one of the things that I have flagged and that the mayor is aware of, and that this team, we should make sure we circle back with you, because given the extended summer we will, we will now have, and starting after Labor Day, that leaves a longer block of time for many of our kids to be without anything, frankly, to do. And so, while I'm glad to see programs ending August 10th, now with school beginning after Labor Day, that gap between the end of our summer programming and the beginning of school is, is larger. And, you know, the mayor's first response was, well, okay, let's see how we can mobilize other city agencies, whether it's rec and parks or others. But I do just want to say publicly, we all need to kind of be aware, as a city, that this, this is something we're going to have to address, because that's extra time and kids, you know, kids are kids. And if you're in unsupervised environments for prolonged periods of time, you are more likely to do things that are not productive. So, there are real implications to starting after Labor Day. So, I'll just ask the team to make sure that you reach out to the colleagues within the city, so that we can start planning what we can, what we can do to address some of that.
And that has been a part of the conversation at the collaborative. They, they have even talked about funding programs that will pick up that slack sort of before and after our programs.
Great.
We get an N.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our final presentation tonight is on the Family and Community Engagement Strategy.
I know this is a button. Hey, Ms. Button, good evening, everyone. I know this is the end of the night, and you guys have saved the best for last, so we appreciate that. To Madam Chair and Madam CEO and School Board Commissioners, my name is Sabrina Satin, and I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Engagement.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shayna McIver. I'm the Family Engagement Manager. I'd also like to thank the community members and families who stuck around, who are still here, so thank you for this opportunity.
So, today's presentation is intended to provide an overview of the work of the Family and Community Engagement Office. We will share information about where we've been defining the work, lessons learned, and blueprint outreach. Are we trying to figure that out?
Not the only one.
We're trying to figure out that.
Something's happening. It won't stay.
Okay, here we are. So, go to the next one. Thank you. So, City Schools value all of our stakeholders. We cannot get this work done without parents and families. Our work is anchored in the board priorities for FCE. The words highlighted are crucial in our work. Partner, foster shared ownership, creating opportunities, all led, all, all lend to deeply engaged parents. So, our office, our office mission, the Office of Engagement, is a systemic link between Baltimore City Public Schools and its school families, communities, and partners. Our mission is to develop and cultivate effective school family and community partners, and leverage those partnerships as key resources in the success of our schools and our students. City School believes that authentic engagement is crucial for improving the academic achievement of our students. Authentic engagement is rooted in genuine collaborative and trusted relationships, action-oriented responses to address unique community needs, and intentional efforts to ensure equity of our stakeholders. So, you'll see, really, this is our, this is our theory of action. Positive relationships plus strategic collaboration equal authentic engagement. If there are positive and trusted relationships plus opportunities for strategic collaborations, our families and community stakeholders are authentically engaged. So, you'll see some stakeholder values. We will give you a couple of minutes to read it, from staff and from parents, and this was from one of the six schools.
And I'd only add, if I may, Sabrina, that this was feedback provided as we did a needs assessment during the summer for some of our highest need schools, and this is what our school-based staff shared, as well as families.
So, we wanted you to hear from our school communities. This is feedback that was collected from families, again, and school-based staff, from interviews as part of needs assessment conducted this fall. So, we recognize that the needs of our families and communities are wide-ranging and unique. This requires the district and school communities to use tailored approaches in order to engage our stakeholders. We want to increase awareness of the district's engagement efforts and supports among family and communities and partners. We're working to change the narrative.
Thanks, Sabrina. The graphic that you have here is, illustrates our family and community engagement strategy. There are three focus areas. The first focus area is schools as centers of communities. We want and we envision schools serving as hubs in the community. This is about partnerships. This is about schools learning to leverage partnerships and evaluate the effectiveness of their partnerships. This is about our school, community-school strategy, and all schools seeing themselves somewhere along that continuum. The second focus area, excuse me, is efficient use of resources. School-based staff need to understand the unique needs of their school community and utilize the available funding streams to support meaningful interventions and programming. We're talking about our family and community, community engagement, excuse me, Title I dollars. This is how we resource the work. We want schools to be thoughtful and strategic about how they use those dollars, to resource not only professional development for families and family leaders, to resource parent resource rooms, and parent engagement overall. Family literacy night, learning opportunities for not only parents, but community members who have a vested interest in the education of children. We want to make sure everybody knows what they can do, what their role is in the education of children. And finally, the third focus area is capacity building. The Office of Engagement will build the capacity in staff and families to ensure that needs of all families and communities inform district initiatives, and families are able to support their children's academic achievement. This is about affording parents the opportunity to be leaders, affording them the opportunity to play a role in decision-making. This is our FCE, our Family and Community Engagement Quarterly PD that we provide. Schools have FCE leads, those are folks that have been identified as Those are folks that have been identified as the school, as, excuse me, by the school leader to serve as the liaison in the school, between the school and the school community. We provide quarterly professional development for those folks to ensure that they are able to do just that. This is, this also, this focus area is also about our relaunching of our Family Institute. Presently, we are hosting, hosting focus group discussions. We have done so with parents. On the fifteenth, I believe, we have, we're excited to say, we have principals coming to talk to us about what they envision, how they used the Family Institute in the past, and how we can make sure that it aligns with the goals of the blueprint. Here are a few of our goals and objectives. These goals are around leadership, learning, and access to volunteer and partnership opportunities, as well as our community school strategy. These are goals that we are using data to measure the progress of. For example, again, one objective that is enlisted here is the Title I Family and Community Engagement Dollars, the spending of those dollars. We exceeded our goal this year by thirteen percentage points. It's a big deal to us. We have spent more of our Title I percent, excuse me, parent engagement allocation this year than we have in the past five years. This is less about compliance. This isn't about checking off the list. This is about our office supporting schools to support families and communities, making sure that they have strong learning, meaningful learning opportunities. How, how do we get it done? You see, in the first bullet says restructuring of the office. Our staffing model is different. I'll talk a little bit about that in a few slides down the road. Prioritizing learning opportunities for school-based staff and school communities. We heard from stakeholders. That's why I said we're mentioning, that's why I mentioned, excuse me, the relaunching of that Family Institute. This is our training arm. This is how we ensure that everybody is equipped to do what they need to do to support the learning, um, that we want to take place in schools. We've increased cross-functional collaboration. So look around this room, there isn't one office represented that we aren't working with, um, to ensure there's some meaningful programming for schools and communities. School choice, principal selection process, and a host of other initiatives that we're working with. Stakeholders, again, our partners and friends in the work. We're proud to say that family and community engagement is being fully integrated across content areas. The last bullet says strengthening external partnerships to foster shared vision and collaboration aligned with the blueprint. As we engage partners, we share the focus areas of the blueprint. We orient them to the strategy, and ensure that they have an understanding of the direction that the district is going in. I mentioned the restructuring of our office. This slide here represents the new roles in our office. First of which is the bilingual family and community engagement specialist, Edwin Lopez. No stranger to the district. Edwin comes from the ESAL department, lots of experience with our families and schools that are serving bilingual and newcomer families. We're excited to have him. Edwin leads the work of our district's newcomer task force. He also works collaboratively, excuse me, with, and provides technical assistance and professional development to local immigrant families. Then there's our family and community engagement evaluator, Amanda Klein. Amanda is also not new to this work. Amanda has been a FCE specialist, a community school coordinator, and is our data guru. And she's ensuring us and keeping us in line, ensuring that we're just not doing what feels good, that the work that we're doing is driven by data. Uh, we've had our schools do family and community engagement needs assessments. We are using that data to drive the work that we do. And then our youth engagement specialist is a new role as well. Rashad Stanton. Rashad is, Rashad is new to the district, but he is not new to this work. You wouldn't think that he was, because he has jumped in, and he has started this work, um, and is doing a phenomenal job at it. He, right now, he presently leads, in collaboration with our Teaching and Learning Department, he is leading a Youth Up Next initiative. It is a youth voice, uh, voice initiative focused on literacy. Rashad is also the staff person in charge of supporting high school engagement. He's coming from the Family League.
Excuse me, uh, you, you, you should...
I just asked where he was coming from, what district or what area, what program is he coming from?
Well, he's a product of Baltimore City Schools, but Rashad is, um, coming from the Family League of Baltimore. Uh, Rashad is a, I'm a fellow of so many things. I can't think of right now, but...
Baltimore Core?
Bunting neighborhoods. He's also a part of a national male, black male initiative, um, but I can ensure that you all get his credentials, but, um, he's the right man for the job, we feel.
Rashad is the new, is...
He's the new youth engagement specialist, yes.
Okay, okay. So he just left the Family League?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, we, we grabbed him right on up. Um, we knew that Dr. Santalisa's prioritized youth engagement, um, and we worked with him and, um, different circles, and felt that, um, he had a, a good network of folks, but also, he is very passionate and believes in the work. Um, there's one other position that is not here, that was not approved at the time of the development of this presentation, but we are excited to say that we have, um, been able to resource a position solely for community schools, a community school specialist, which is posted right now. So we are very eager for that person to be brought on.
Let's get, we'll get through and we'll ask some questions.
Okay.
Is, is it a specific question on this slide? You know what? Let's, go ahead.
Sure.
What is the job, again, that's being posted?
Sure. It is a community school specialist. Right now, the, the work of community schools is led by myself. I serve as the liaison for the district amongst the other things that are part of my scope of work. And for a strategy that is promising and growing as it is, we need an individual to focus on it, to be the support of, um, our school leaders and school-based staff. Uh, presently, and be quite honest with you, we're often reactionary to things, and we want to be more hands-on. We want to make sure that we're optimizing, uh, the strategy as best we can.
So is that, is that replacing the coordinators at schools, or...
No, it is not.
Supporting them?
No, it is supporting them. So presently, the coordinators at school are, as you may know, employees of community-based organizations. There are nineteen of them that are part of the strategy. Those coordinators receive professional development from the Family League monthly. Right now, we don't have the same supports for principals and school-based staff who are part of the strategy.
Okay.
Right? And we want to change that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
This next slide... Is about what we do, how we deploy our human resources. So our work is twofold. There are team members that are responsible for strategy, liaisons, liaising with other offices, with things, as I mentioned, like the, uh, school choice, the budget process, school performance plan, and other things that need to have the FCE imprint, footprint, I'm sorry. So what you see here are three categories. There's leadership and strategy, parent and family engagement, and community engagement. What is not represented here is our on-the-ground supports to schools. Right? And so what I have here, and if you don't mind, you can pass it out, what I have here is just a simple graphic, but I thought it was important for the board and other folks here to be familiar with what supports our school-based folks, our FC specialists provide. And this, again, this graphic just illustrates the stakeholders in school communities that they engage with and coach. School leaders, school, school family and community engagement leads, school family, council chairs, community volunteers, partners, and leaders. Give you an opportunity to look at that. So what you see before you on the screen is more of the district-wide supports, and what you have before you, we hope, illustrates some of the supports that our FCE specialists provide to schools directly. It's a little too fast. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move along. The next slide you see is Blueprint Beyond the Classroom. As a part of our direct support to schools, as I mentioned, we support those family and community engagement leads that are in school. We host quarterly professional development opportunities for these leads. In the fall, at our first lead kickoff, we also invited principals, parents, and partners for the quarter-one kickoff event. We had over a hundred and seventy-five people in attendance. So excited that Dr. Santalisa's was there to bring forth welcoming remarks and encouraging remarks for those folks. She helped set the tone by charging schools with caring, connecting, and collaborating with families around the blueprint. And it's not mentioned here, but I think, like I said, the quarterly professional development that we provide is very intentional. For quarter two, we hosted a resource fair. We wanted to make sure that schools knew how to spend those dollars that they had. We wanted to make sure they were using them in ways that were allowable, but also that were unique, that met the unique needs of their school communities. So we had about thirty, thirty or so resource providers at Fort Worthington, um, and we also walked them through some other, uh, FCE deliverables and things of that nature, and familiarized them with supports that we can provide them. Our last slide speaks to our next steps around blueprint. Rather, it's a summation, because we do have a more detailed plan around our blueprint outreach, which was presented to the blueprint implementation team on last Wednesday, to allow the stakeholders at that table to weigh in. And we did receive some very good feedback. So the strategy includes three things. Collaboration, collaboration with communications and other key offices at the district to develop informational documents for families. Also engagement, engaging stakeholders across the district through a host of meetings to provide parents and families with a basic introduction to the blueprint for success, the key focus areas and the timeline. And finally, facilitating and mobilizing. We want, we'll partner with, again, other content offices and community-based organizations to offer our families training on the blueprint. So that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Frank?
Thank you very much. I knew very little about the office, so I know a lot more now. I, just a, a couple, a couple comments and then a question. I really couldn't get a sense of how the office was organized. You had two slides. One was very specific, and the other was more general in terms of community partnerships. I think it would be helpful in presenting this to the board and just outside, to give people a sense, almost an org chart, and how...
It's not, Appendix A.
And what I failed to mention was the attachments in the...
I didn't, that's great. And then maybe what I'm about to say is in Appendix A as well. Maybe I should look, but, and that is...
This is Appendix A. Yeah.
Okay. And that is the, um, what the goals are, and your capacity to achieve those goals. I think we all know that few entities within Baltimore City Public Schools have all the resources they need to do everything they want to do. I couldn't get a sense from the presentation of whether you were achieving a hundred percent of your goals, or fifty percent, because you have, you know, limited resources. So even a pie chart that might show the resources you have available and how you're spending them aligned with the various priorities would be helpful.
Okay.
To give people a sense of where the priorities are, where we might be falling short, and where we might be able to bring in external resources. And the final question is, can you just explain the differences, the requirements around school family councils, whether it's Comor, I don't know what requires them, whether it's us, and how they relate or don't relate to PTAs, and whether there are conflicts that exist in schools between school family councils and PTAs?
Okay. So we do have, I mean, we do have guidance around and roadmap around our school family council, and it is the expectation that all schools have functioning school family councils. The, if there is an organized parent group at the school, that organized parent group can indeed be a part of the council. Um, you did, you asked a question about conflicts...
PTA.
Between the PTA, what they think their roles and responsibilities are versus the roles that we, uh, I guess, give to the family councils. I didn't, maybe I did miss it. I didn't see in here PTAs. I saw school and family councils. Do you choose to work with that group and, at the exclusion of PTAs? How does that work?
No, not at the exclusion of PTAs. Um, it varies. We are with the, um, support of our evaluator. We are collecting that data on PTA versus PTO, um, and other types of parent action teams that schools have chosen or elected to, um, implement in their schools. One does not replace the other. There is an expectation that parents and community members are part of the school family council. This is the advisory board. The council serves as an opportunity for all key stakeholders to weigh in on decision-making, the budget, principal selection process, and other decisions, and implementation of the school performance plan.
Is that legislated? Is that, how, how do they get that power, that authority to have the responsibilities that you just listed?
We have, there's policy, and we have guidance for schools, and that is what the family and community engagement specialist should be coaching schools around and supporting them with. Uh, we had, um, I believe, a webinar this school year, as well as workshops for schools to attend to learn how to implement strong school family councils in their schools. But again, that specialist, that is a part of their scope of work, to be on hand in providing this group technical assistance. But we can ensure that you get that guidance, um, on school family councils.
Commissioner Cannon?
I guess my question was on school family councils as well. Can you, what is, maybe it's in the guidance, and you just want to send around the guidance, because, um, you know, what I want to know is there outside community leaders, uh, community partners that sit on that? Is it just parents? Is that, well, I guess, I guess, so then I have two questions. Thank you for your, yes. I hear you. So in the guidance, that's what it is. What it's in reality, you know, so I know we have functioning school family councils everywhere. How many school family coun...
No, we don't.
Oh, well, sorry.
Not even close.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought that was part of the slide. Okay. Okay, so let me ask another question. How many functioning school family councils do we have? Like, meaning up and running? And then, I guess I just wanted to understand membership, because I've attended my school family council. It's a lot of parents, teachers, and faculty, but it is not comprised necessarily of outside community partners and community leaders. And is that the expectation, that it should be like, like you said, you refer to it as an advisory board? Or is it more internal?
Well, it varies. There are some schools where there's more of a presence of community members and parents than there is staff. Um, but we do have data and information that I can make sure that everyone here receives. We have an infograph, my colleagues are telling me. Um, we also have recommendations for who and how many parents, um, as a best practice, and community members who should be a part of the school family council.
Yeah, I'd like to start there, just to understand the makeup. Like, what do we, what, what is an ideal of a school family council?
And I believe it's three parents and two community members.
For me, the most, this is helpful to get a, a good view, and I appreciated the chart. I particularly appreciate the, so the youth engagement person, I've been asking for that for a while. I have two primary questions. The first one's related to this conversation we're having right now. I think what's going to be most helpful is to hear updates on this on a more regular basis, and, um, with like a ton of honesty about what is and is not working. Because, let's not pretend, let us, let us not pretend that just because we know who's supposed to be on them, and how we define them, that they actually exist and function. Right? That's why the gentleman keeps coming back, and he can tell us the dates he came and told us that there's not functioning school family councils. So let's try to get them functioning, but if there's something else that's functioning better, let's help that. Do you work with business volunteers? Because they're, they're...
Yes, we do.
I thought, I figured, yeah, that's... So I think we've got the, you know, there's people that are trying to recruit, you know, you know, some business advisors. There's a lot of models out there. I think the most important thing is to try to, um, I think, and I suspect you agree, to have something that works for each school, however it shape it takes, and to be open to, um, people saying when they're not working, and when other, when there might be other ways to do it.
Thank you. We are, this is the time of year, honestly, when we, um, get the most flags about where there are functioning councils and there aren't, because of the budget process.
There you go.
So, and again, we do try to get ahead of that with the webinar, with, um, reaching out, checking, assessing the dashboard to see at least if schools have updated their registry, and who's represented on those registries. But this, again, is the time of year when we learn that, you know, there aren't some, or they may be just on paper alone.
Yeah.
And that is our job to support those schools. And we do know that there are advisory groups like business volunteers, the advisory boards that exist, but that is just business partners alone. So, we are trying to figure out, and that's what we actually recommend that schools do, figure out what works for them, just to ensure that they are allowing and affording all stakeholders an opportunity to be a part of whatever that is.
And I think this probably was answered in the presentation. I, I, I just want to make it sure I'm clear. We've seen, just in this calendar year, which really basically was January, a lot of the youth-led groups came, come to the board meetings or speaking to us. We consistently hear from the Algebra Project and Youth is Resources, but there are many others, and they're finding their voice and exercising their voice in really wonderful and powerful ways in the city and related to the schools. Is it part of the, the new?
Youth engagement specialist?
Youth engagement specialist to be in conversation with and collaboration with those groups? Because they have a lot to say that's actually really positive and helpful. And I assumed from what you said that, that that he is, but I just wanted to ask it straight.
He is. Rashad apologized to us for not being here because he had four youth engagement meetings, collaboratives to attend this evening.
That's a good reason not to be.
Yeah, four of them. So, we're like, yeah, we, you go right ahead, we'll fill you in.
Okay. So, that's, so good. I mean, I just, I, I pretty much could tell from what you said, but I wanted to just make sure that that was the case. Because I think there's a lot of people out there that want to be engaged with us, that want to help us, and I, to know that we're going to be affirmative about, or proactive about that is, is great.
And I just wanted to note as well, he just met with Algebra Project yesterday, and some of these other student groups he'll be meeting with and getting dates to meet with them as well, so he's, he's on it.
And held a kickoff last week for this Youth Up Next initiative that I, I mean, I feel is really promising. I had the opportunity, the privilege to be in the room, and he had at least thirty representatives from different organizations across the city in the room. Eager and awaiting for this opportunity to kickoff.
Fantastic. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. I just wanted to stress the importance of, I'm really encouraged by the new position that you talked about, this, this person that's going to help principals. Because having, being someone who works in a community and understands the importance of connecting schools and community, there are often times when groups get pushed back from principals because there really is no acknowledgement of what a community-based group could do in terms of bringing additional resources to their school building. So, being able to kind of help principals see the larger picture. And then, we talked a, a lot about a few different types of advisory groups. There's your PTO, PTA, and then there's your family community council, and then the, the group from out of Business Volunteers Unlimited, I think that's it, their advisory board. In my mind, that's, that's a whole lot of advising, right? And that could become a bit much for a principal to have to deal with. So, if there's a way that we could create even a pilot model where we are collapsing some of that, so that you have business, people who are running businesses along with community leaders and, and parents and teachers all together for the same cause, then that might be a little bit more streamlined for a principal, a little bit more palatable, right? So, they can, they have one group that they're working with, and it, and it may make them want to do this a little bit more rather than having to decide all of these different advisory boards to figure out.
Well noted, and I, I will just share that we do have a partnership manager. She's maternity leave right now, she's had a baby boy. But we have Monique Armstrong, who that is a part of, that is a part of her role to help to make sure that principals are partnership-ready. The FCE specialist can do some of that as well. But I would agree, this community school specialist is the, a person who will help work with principals and help them to juggle all that they have to juggle and be partnership-ready.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
Family, thank you so much for the work that your office does and is doing because it's very important. The family and community engagement specialists, there are four of them?
Yes.
Okay, so are they, how do they interact throughout the district? Are they assigned schools?
Yes, they are.
Specifically, they are?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question. And do we have the list of those schools that they're each assigned to?
Sure, we can make sure that you get that list.
Thank you.
And you should also know, Commissioner, that the ratio because of budget cuts of the number of family and community engagement specialists matched to the number of schools has grown significantly over the years due to, due to budget cuts. And we're talking about the challenge of different schools at different levels of readiness to partner, to engage community, to have functioning school-family councils. Look, the, the team is still doing it and they're still out there, but I think that there's also a reality check around just what kind of skill it requires to be able to navigate family and partnerships, and not every school leader has it. So, while there's four here, there was a time that there were, what, fifteen?
Sixteen.
There were sixteen. And so, we've cut back over the years from sixteen, where we had one FCE specialist per network of approximately ten to twelve schools to now four. So, I, I just think in terms of context, that's one quarter of the, of the FCE specialists that we used to have.
Yep. Those of us who identify, I guess, as the leadership team, we have schools. Like Sabrina had schools until Rashad, our youth engagement specialist, was brought on. I have Title I schools and charter schools to support, so.
And this is one of the, this is when we prioritize in budget time, keeping teachers, this is what, I mean, this is, this is the stuff that goes, so it's, it's been unfortunate. Commissioner Frank?
I agree with Commissioner Kociany about the fact that we need to know sort of everything, and particularly what you feel your limits are. We want to know where you think you can't perform because of lack of resources. It isn't just we who want to know that. State legislatures need to know that. The public needs to know. So, you, you have this great presentation about all that you're going to do, but at the end of the presentation, we didn't get a sense of the fact that we now have four when we used to have sixteen. And it's a great thing to present this, you know, great plan and, but it's better to present your limitations as well. We all need to know that, and the public needs to know that. They can't expect us to perform at the same level than we did ten years ago because we can't. They need to hear that from all of us in these presentations.
That's a nicer way of saying what I was trying to say. No, because I think it's, when I say we want, we need to know the truth, it isn't to say that you're, it's, it's not to say that you're lying to us now, that's not it at all. It's to, it's to make, to be straight about what's possible, what's not possible with the resources that you're allocated. Commissioner Bondeman?
Briefly, I'm looking at your presentation. Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. As I was moving through the presentation, the one thing that, that I was wondering, I was looking at all the resources and the budget and the, and the assistance that you give to each school. I was also wondering, basically, looking at all of this, if a parent with, parents come to you with an issue, just, just straight out without all of this, come to you, to school with an issue, what happens? If they have a concern, do they refer them or do they? What happens if I just came in and I said, I need whatever?
Then we, we, we try to assist you. We try to help you navigate through the system or external systems.
What I mean is, do they, is that person referred to, first, the secretary's there or admin is there?
Mm-hmm.
And they're referred to the, at the school?
Okay.
And you have somebody on site, or they referred the person, the family, the parent to your office, or, and then you work through the issues or the problems with the parent?
Yes. So, it, it doesn't happen as much as it used to because, as Dr. Santa Lisa said, I think some schools, school leaders are adapting or recognizing that we have a limited capacity, but there are leaders, I spoke with one yesterday, where leaders are, you know, haven't necessarily quite accepted the fact that they can't send a parent to us who is homeless or who needs resources. And I say can't, meaning we may not be able to assist them as we have in the past, but we do it. Honestly, we do it. We make it happen. We connect with our colleagues within the building. We collect, connect with homelessness services, with Allen Blackwell, with Chief Davis's office, with external partners at DSS, with the Family League. We make it happen to the best of our ability.
I noticed, and I didn't realize this, that the ombudsman's also in that office, so.
Yes.
She gets other stuff as well.
That office gets a lot of calls.
So, with that, we want to thank you for the presentation and for the questions, and it'd be nice to hear from this group more often. I think people would appreciate hearing how it's going, including some of the stuff Commissioner Frank asked for, but thank you very much.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you.
With, with that, I would just like to highlight the upcoming meetings. The PCAB meeting is this Thursday at six-thirty. The Ops, Operations Committee meeting is in this, in this room. And Operations Committee is also in this room on the twentieth at ten a.m. The Policy Committee meets in this room at three-thirty on the twentieth. The rescheduled Board Forum on School Police Policy is in this room at five-thirty, also on the twentieth. Teaching and Learning Committee at nine a.m. on the twenty-seventh in this room. And then, the next time, we'll all be together for the executive session, and full board is on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. Anything else for the good of the whole? Yes, I thought you would, I thought you were going to say that in your comments. So, on February, yeah, I, I was going to say something and then I thought, when I looked and saw, so on February twenty-second, and it's located at? B-triple-C Fine Arts Theater. It's a parent, parent. It's an Investing in Parents Town Hall, B-triple-C. It's, she, it's being well circulated. Here's a flyer right here. Thanks, Kim. I, I, honest to God, didn't say anything because I thought you were.
Madam Chair?
You have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner McFadden. Guy of a second? Commissioner Richardson, all in favor?